Good afternoon to our audience and to our school board members. I'd like to call to order the January 7th, 2021, school board meeting. We'll start the meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Will our clerk please do the roll call?
This is Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger.
Here.
Dr. Krab.
Present.
Ms. McKeever.
Here.
Ms. Perrier.
Present.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
And our student rep, Ms. Packer.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight is our board organization night, and I will serve as the Chair of the Board until a new Chair is elected. So I would like to open the floor now for nominations for Chair of the Charlottesville City School Board.
I would like to nominate Lisa Torres for Chair of the Charlottesville City School Board.
Thank you. Ms. Lisa Torres has been nominated.
I second the nomination, Dr. Atkins.
Wonderful. Ms. Torres has been nominated and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger?
Yes.
Dr. Krab?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and now I will turn the board meeting over to our new board Chair, Ms. Lisa Torres. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins, and thank you, board members, for the nomination and your vote of confidence. I look forward to our continued dedicated work together. And now would like to take us to the next item, which is electing a Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Mr. James Bryant as Vice Chair.
Thank you.
I'll second that nomination.
Great, we've received a nomination and a second. Is there any discussion? Great, thank you. Madam Clerk, may we have a vote, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger?
Yes.
Dr. Krab?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you all so much for your support. Looking forward to our continued work together.
And moving to 4.3 is the appointing clerk and deputy clerk, Dr. Atkins. Would you like to?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend for clerk, Ms. Julia Green, and for deputy clerk, Ms. Leslie Packer.
Do we need a second on that? I will gladly second.
I will, I will move those nominations.
All right, great. How about I'll second that then?
Okay, sounds good.
And is there any discussion? All right, and Madam, who gets to take role on that? Madam Clerk still? Please, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger?
Yes.
Dr. Krab?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade? Mr. Wade?
All right, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, and our next item is 5.0, approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, get a vote, please.
Yes. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger?
Yes.
Dr. Krab?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is 6.0, comments from members of the community. I believe we had, Mr. Como, if you'll help me remember how many people were signed up, but a reminder to our public that you can address the school board on any issues during this public comment. We hold public comment towards the end of the meeting again. We also have an option to reach out to us via school board. So that's schoolboard@charlottesvilleschools.org. And if you will, I guess, either raise your hand in the chat or raise your hand on the Zoom or put your name in the chat, and Mr. Como will call you out and kind of queue you up. And if you will also please state your name and address for us, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes.
Great, and I know there was an accommodation for somebody on phone to speak, so I'll make sure that I acknowledge that person and I'll, and see if they're still here and wanting to speak. But right now, the ID here for speaking first is listed as Stephanie Jest. And... Yes.
Oh, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Jest, thank you.
Great, thanks. My name's Stephanie Jest, and I live at 307 Fifth Street Southwest.
Great, thank you.
So I will, I'll go ahead and wind up. First, thank the school board for your leadership. The issue I want to talk about is SROs and SROs being put back in our schools. And I remember finding out that when the SROs were voted on to be removed, just how thrilled I was that it takes a long time in a lot of places for school boards to get to the point that they're willing to fight for that. And also, I feel for you all and for, like, at the, I've been to the meetings, and the majority of parents do not want uniformed police officers, or armed uniformed police officers in the school. And so I really feel for you guys, the battle, since you had a vote and it's now being kind of taken back. And so what I want to do, and I got the really nice email from Dr. Atkins and Ms. McKeever, and you want facts, and then that's what I'm going to try to do, and then also, what we all need to be doing is showing all of our students that all of them matter and that all of them are really capable of great things. So for facts regarding SROs, is there, there are not any quantifiable, verifiable facts that SROs actually increase safety. They definitely, a lot of our culture has a perception that police create safety, but facts don't lead to that. What we do have fact-wise is the fact that students of color don't perform as well in places where they see uniformed police officers and especially an armed uniformed police officer. But this doesn't mean that our administration doesn't need a tremendous amount of support. Teachers don't need support. So what we need to be looking at is the correct way to do it, and it is not police. Even police will tell you, and I've heard them say, that they're overused, that police in mental health, they don't have the training, and they're not the right fit. And I urge you guys to really stay with the fact that it doesn't have to be police to equal safety. The thing with what we have here with our population, to go to more facts, is any student of any age that is acting out, what they really are looking for is connection. And what the resources that people need are people who are trained with this age group. Amazing, it's a tricky age group, teenagers, but there are people who are passionate and trained to deal with people who need connection and need support. So that's what we need to help our school with and need to help everybody with, is finding those people who can actually make a difference. And so that the schools do need support, but we know that armed police officers are not what we want to be doing. If I've got another couple seconds, just...
Sorry.
Oh, um, another thing in this educational theory is that kids will rise to what we give them. They can't rise above what we give them, and if we put police officers in there, what we're stating, showing them is that we do expect them to engage in criminal behavior, as that's what police do. So we need to show them have resources there because we know they can do better and that we believe in them to be that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jest.
Okay, next we have Sage Boyer, and I apologize if I'm saying the, the names wrong. But Sage Boyer is next on the line.
Sage, welcome. Are you there?
Hi, as far as the SROs go, I think that they should be around, but I don't think that they should be involved in disciplining of students. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, I believe we have Richard Fero, who's joining us through telephone. And so, Richard, if that's you, I believe it's star six to unmute. To unmute your phone, let me see if that works on your end. Yep, it looks like that worked now, Richard.
All right, Mr. Fero.
Hey, y'all, this is Richard, 8:25 past 6:00. Um, and appreciate you making sure I got on. I actually, I got the voicemail from Dr. Atkins earlier today, so I've, I've decided not to make any comments at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Como, next?
Sure, well, at this time, I do not see any hands raised in the, oh, there we go. We have a hand raised, and it is, the call, the person is named John Wells.
Welcome, Mr. Wells. Are you there?
Hello, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Great. Happy New Year, everyone. Jennifer, that's a pretty large smile. Thank you for giving the community the opportunity to comment. I live at 1122 East Jefferson Street. And with all the known equity and inclusion issues that COVID and the related virtue learning has caused, I assumed that priority number one would be to get the students, teachers, and staff safely back in buildings. It seemed like we were on our way with all the schedule planning and physical safety mitigation conducted over the last nine months, and then it seemed like the division and the board moved the focus to pre-K through fourth grade, which I understood the lesser focus on bringing Walker, Buford, and CHS back, a hybrid schedule for those schools. It seemed suboptimal, given the scheduling issues, which begged questions to me, why not talk about bringing them back four days a week, too? But anyway, you were not going to hear from me again, actually, on the subject of getting kids back in school. However, the meeting prior, just prior to holiday break happened, and it was announced only pre-K to second go back face-to-face. Since then, literally no stakeholder I've spoken to, including parents, teachers, students, or other community members, understands why you would consider approving, splitting up elementary students, considering that many third and fourth graders have pre-K to second siblings. The decision, the decision exacerbates inequality because not only do guardians of split siblings have more logistics and potential expenses to figure out, the community organizations that stepped up when no one else did are, are being asked to remain off, to remain offering additional services unnecessarily. It makes no sense, and I question the process and influences to arrive at that decision. To my knowledge, no real explanation was offered. I ask, at what point do we decide to go back if the buildings are mitigated, the contact tracing is in place, and we are all wearing masks? The local case numbers have gone up, as I'm sure you'll cover tonight, but thankfully, the local hospitalizations have come back down off highs. I estimate between half a percent and 2.4% of the health district currently to be infected with COVID. Vaccine-based community immunity is unlikely to be with us this spring or even by this fall, unfortunately. Meanwhile, a number of school systems and schools in Virginia have successfully navigated going back face-to-face. At some point, I would suggest letting the 35% of students who do not plan to come back in person be taught by the 35% of teachers who do not want to come back in person. I ask that you pass on holding any kind of vote tonight in terms of going back to school in person. I ask that the board and Dr. Atkins and staff talk offline between now and next Thursday. Then I ask that you meet and vote next Thursday, January 14th, to send pre-K to fourth grade back for face-to-face instruction on January 22nd. Whether it is an optimal decision to send all the kids back on January 22nd or send none of them back, sending a fraction of schools that, a fraction of each school back that may have multiple siblings across the grades is simply a confounding decision that causes more stress for our least fortunate community members. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have Jessica Taylor has a hand raised.
Ms. Taylor?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Okay, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Atkins. From the onset of the pandemic, the CEA has stood firm in its demands to maintain open and honest communication between teachers and administration, transparency in decision-making, and that the safety of our student, staff, and commitment and community be paramount. Through much hard work by all stakeholders and Dr. Atkins's commitment to our community, significant forward progress has been made, but it is clear that we are not yet there. Just today, the percent positivity in the TJHD reached 11%. We all know that CCS has done a remarkable job in developing and implementing protocols and measures intended to mitigate risk. While most of us find this reassuring, there are countless studies from the US and other countries that show that masks and social distancing are not foolproof. People can and do get sick despite following all guidelines, either at the grocery store or at work. The official assumption is that teachers would contract COVID outside of school but without adequate contact tracing and a full testing protocol that includes asymptomatic children. We can't know this for sure. Governor Northam just yesterday announced that teachers are in Group 1B to get the vaccine, along with first responders and frontline essential workers. This is an additional measure of defense for your educators that will enable going back into classrooms feel that much safer. You know we miss our kids. You know we miss our work families. We want to go back to school. We just don't want to have to risk our lives to do so. Waiting just a bit longer to reopen and bring students back into the buildings will ensure that we won't have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anybody else, Mr. Como?
Um, there's nobody just quite yet. I know we normally give 30 to 40 seconds for any last minute people who'd like to speak.
Sure, or a song by Ms. McKeever. And just a reminder to anybody else who's considering to speak, we do have an opportunity towards the end of the meeting as well. All right, I think we will move on for now. Thank you, everybody. We, our next item actually is 6.2. It is another opportunity for public comment, specifically about the 2021-2022 budget. So if anybody has some thoughts, again, you have an opportunity now to speak and/or, you know, feel free to send us an email. Anybody, Mr. Como?
We did have one more hand go up, and the attendee is listed as DeeDee Smith.
Great.
Let's get, there we go. DeeDee Smith is now unmuted.
Thank you, thank you, and I appreciate the time. As you consider your budget, I would like to suggest, as Ms. McKeever did at her last meeting as Chair, to take extraordinary measures to undo the damage that you've seen in the last year and really, quite frankly, the undamage you've seen in many years before, to bring all children up to competency in reading, writing, and arithmetic by the third grade. I mean, it is, it is time to take extraordinary measures, and as you consider your budget, I hope you will keep that in mind. You can really make a huge difference in going forward because as you've heard tonight with Ms. Jest, I actually really appreciated her SRO comments. Children who get in trouble later are very likely to be academically behind. And I just really hope that this whole crisis we've seen in the last year will, you know, springboard some efforts to say, yes, all of our children deserve a quality education. They deserve to have a competency that enables them to have a successful life. So as you consider your budget, I really, really hope that you will think outside the box, as Ms. McKeever said, and as I certainly agree in really bringing all your particularly very early elementary children up to competency so they can be successful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Anybody else, Mr. Como?
That, at this time, there is, there are no hands raised in the attendees' gallery.
We have just a second or two more, and then we will move on. All right, so I think now we'll close public or comment for now, and we'll move on to item 7.0, which is adoption of our consent agenda. Entertain a motion for that, please.
So move?
Okay, I second it.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. If we could get a vote, please, Madam Clerk.
It's Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger?
Yes.
Dr. Krab?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so there's the initial training, and then there's advanced training. Um, as you're, as you were speaking of, where we want to have skilled individuals in our school buildings that would be able to appropriately respond. Part of that advanced training we've used MANTT is talking students through their, through a crisis, but also the appropriate way to restrain or seclude students until it is no longer an emergency situation. And our policy also says it's, as soon as the, there's no, there's no emergency, the restraint and seclusion stops. So we do have that, which I think supports what you were bringing up as important means.
Dr. Key, I have a question. Um, based on what I read in regards to this policy, is the policy, this policy is designed to use restraint as a last resort after all the other measures have been, steps have been taken to, to sort of control the child or calm the child? This is not the first step?
If it, typically, no. There are, most situations, the interventions that you described, Mr. Bryant, are the ways that our school staff respond to calm students. The restraint and seclusion are extreme emergencies only used to bring, make sure that students, others are protected from, from harm, from physical harm. So, but yes, you're right, that is our first go-to, but those are not the emergencies. A student has a weapon or possession of a controlled substance. Those are the time or any other dan, dangerous object, those are the times, those are, that would be an emergency.
So basically, this is the last resort in terms of restraining a child?
Yes, for those rare cases.
Rare cases.
Yes.
And also in regards to the training of staff, all staff members, are we talking about teachers, administrators?
Administrative assistants.
Every, okay, all bus drivers, everybody will be trained.
All of the senior staff?
The senior staff, okay.
All, all employees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, I, you know, I agree with, you know, what our priorities need to be and our values in looking at this situation. I, and I actually feel like the wording here, I feel comfortable with it because I think that one paragraph, what we're looking at is the wording that, that basically allows a staff member to, in, in the case of a last resort, an extreme emergency, a student may be about to harm themselves, that it doesn't require that staff member in that situation to have to do something else before using restraint. And I, I feel like that's appropriate. Of course, that's never what we want to do with students, but there are situations where, you know, that might have to happen to protect the student. So I, you know, at this point, I feel comfortable with the way this is worded.
Yeah, I'd just like to chime in as well on, based on what Lashandra said about the task forces looking at this. And we are, as far as long-term, we are, you know, these are some of the questions that, that we're answering, trying to come up with a, really a solution to how to address some of the safety issues for restraints and really how to de-escalate, you know, and I understand that, that this will be used in really certain circumstances and rarely used, but that, and, and I think this came up last month as well. But this is, I think, a tool that I think administrators really have to have to use in, just in those rare, rare moments, though. But this is, this is something that will be good as we are discussing it, it, for the task force, so.
I would just like to say that, that paragraph that says, I, it's not in front of me, but that says that our priority is to not use physical restraint, that should be before it currently is. Like, it should be the value statement, and then the rest of it says how we can go. I mean, if that's truly the case, the encourages the use of positive behavioral interventions should be the first, like, we should be, should preface all of this, in my opinion. It's like an afterthought in this, and I just don't think that's what it is in our values. So that, and I'm specifically talking about this one. And I also want to note that occasionally, our policies are used against us. And that is, I have to, you know, so that's what I worry about, and I, and I don't, you know, oh, well, we can both, we can all, seven of us, look at a situation and have seven different ways that interpreting it. And so I, I just want to use caution, and I'm, I'm comfortable with the language of this. If we move that paragraph up as the, in fact, preface to all of this, but I also want to be very clear that what you would consider an emergency and what I consider an emergency... and what I consider an emergency and what somebody on the ground considers an emergency, very different. It's just very different. And I also have not even started to indicate what my concerns are about KNAJ. And I've, last month I did. And I don't see those changes in this policy from the shall mandatory language to the more permissive may language. So I just want to put that out there because I don't know if I'll have an opportunity to mention that again.
Can I also add in one thing about KNAJ? That one, I would like, the first paragraph about investigations by law enforcement officers. I don't like the language in that one either. Law enforcement officers occasionally talk with students about a variety of subjects, including illegal activity. And then it goes on to say, students suspected of involvement in a crime in the community shall be interviewed in the presence of a parent or school official when feasible. I don't like that at all. There should, you know, their, 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 children shouldn't be questioned by law enforcement on school grounds without the permission of a parent. And it says, if the police office determine that they can't delay the interrogation until the parents arrive, I'm not comfortable with any of that language at all.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger, if you'd like to go through this policy and indicate to us what you'd like to strike, what you'd like to change, what language you'd like to change, then we can make those adjustments in that policy.
Okay, I'm just not comfortable with the open-endedness of it and allowing children to be questioned by law enforcement without parental permission or a parent present.
Dr. Atkins, may we, I mean, if she starts with that, and I, Ms. Bryson Morsberger, I don't know if you, you feel comfortable doing that, but if you would like to have a first go at it. And then we can either.
I'm comfortable with that.
Or if other school board members would like to, one at a time, provide further input on that.
Either way, works for me.
Does that suit you, Dr. Atkins?
Yes, that, that would work well. We want to make sure that this is a policy that the board embraces and that we can implement in our school division. So we're glad to strike some of this language. We know that there's a robust discussion going on now is the role of the SROs in our school division, period. So we will happy to strike some of this language.
Are we talking about doing that offline after the meeting and maybe not approving this one tonight?
That would be fine, yes.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Ms. Torres, if you want to, I could work with two board members to make these adjustments and bring it back to the board in February.
Okay, that's fine. If you all would like to reach out to me. I mean, I have a couple in mind, but I'll wait to see if anybody else is interested after the meeting. That would be great.
Well, you, you're getting good at this chair thing already, aren't you?
You know, I've had some good, good prior chairs to, to watch, so thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
That was for policy KNAJ that would be offline. JM, are we, is it the will of the board to move the paragraph that Ms. McKeever was referring to as a preference, as a preface to all about school board wants the positive behaviors that to go up at the top?
Well, we can check in with everybody. Thank you. That was definitely a comment I was going to make, and she beat me to that. I feel, I feel very strongly, no, 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 I feel very strongly. I was referencing Ms. McKeever about that same, same point. So I would, I would prefer that that we start out strongly with that. But I'm open to hear what everybody else feels and thinks about that.
Yeah, I would agree with that, too. I, I think, yeah. And I, I don't know when we're ready to, to move approval of this. But maybe if we could make that change and, and move that statement to the front of our policy. You know, I would entertain a motion to approve this with that in mind, with that change.
Could you show me that paragraph you're referring to?
On page three of JM. And it's the third from the bottom, but I'm going to give Ms. Thacker a second to get that one up. Or back them. Yep, page three. There we are. Do you see it, Mr. Bryant? It's the third bottom, the school board encourages the use.
Okay, okay, I see it. Thank you. Yeah, I agree. It should be moved.
So Ms. Craft made a motion to, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, take action or approve this with the modification that we will move that to the beginning of this policy.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Are we just voting on the, we're not voting on KNAJ, are we? That's waiting, right?
Correct. It's just JM. So we have a motion and a second. No further discussion, is that correct? Madam Clerk, will you take a roll, please? Did we lose her?
Sorry, I had to wait for the screen to come back. Okay, thank you. Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger.
Yes.
Dr. Craft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Um, yeah.
Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the next item, Dr. Atkins, will you introduce? We're talking about our program of study, please.
Yes. Madam Chair, in December, November timeframe, we brought to the board the program of studies. Any changes to our programs studies at Walker, Bucette, and the high school? Tonight, we have Dr. Odie and we have representatives from each of those schools that will present to you a reminder of what you discussed the previous meeting and ask you to take action.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Atkins, good evening. As Dr. Atkins said last month, our staff did present the program of study for the for 2122 tonight. Dr. Atkins recommends that the board take actions. And if you have questions, we do have Dr. Irazieri and Ms. Delaurier here in the gallery. At this time, I'd ask that you take action.
Thank you. Dr. Odie, do I have a motion?
I move that the school board accept the recommendation of Dr. Odie and Dr. Atkins to accept the program of study for the year 2122.
I second that.
Thank you. And are there any questions or discussion from other board members at this time? Ms. McKeever, anything? Mr. Wade, I don't see you on my screen right now, but any questions?
No.
All right. Mr. Bryant?
No, I second the motion.
Okay. Ms. Perrier? Ms. Craft?
I'm good.
All right. Madam Clerk, let me take a vote, please.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Bryson Morsberger.
Yes.
Dr. Craft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier. Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Odie. And Dr. Atkins, 8.3 is the continuation of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Madam Chair, we would ask that the board take action to extend the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. That particular act allows our employees to have a paid leave should they be involved in a COVID-19 situation at their homes or the person or members of their family. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act expired December 31st. And we would, 2020, we asked the board to approve the continuation of that act through June 30th, 2021.
I so move that we approve the Families First Coronavirus Act extension.
I second it.
Any discussion or questions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask Dr. Atkins a question. Dr. Atkins, this is an extension of what was in place first semester, and there've been no changes. Am I correct?
That's correct. Ms. Perrier.
Thank you, Dr. Hubbard. You were over at the right of my picture screen.
I will tell the board that we have several of our employees who have taken advantage of this leave. And they have been extremely appreciative of the opportunity to do that, to care for either themselves, family member, or one of their children.
Any other questions or discussion? Great, thank you. Real quickly, I just wanted to say I'm very appreciative that we were able to extend this. I know this isn't something that, that all school divisions, I think most are doing it. So I am very appreciative. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, if we could take a vote, please.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger.
Yes.
Dr. Craft.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We are now moving along to items for discussion. And 9.1 is review of metrics. Dr. Atkins?
Madam Chair, we, we would like to present to you tonight the current metrics for the coronavirus spread in our community and in our region. December's 16th meeting, the school board gave permission for staff to start working towards a return to face-to-face using Model A. Tonight, we would ask the board to take a look, as the board committed to do, to come back and take a review of the metrics as they currently stand and give us additional guidance on moving forward with face-to-face learning. So, Dr. Baptist?
If Ms. Thacker would display the slides, please. As she's pulling that up, we do have several different ways that we're going to show you the data. Also, looking at Charlottesville specifically, then also, as Dr. Atkins said, into our region because we understand the importance of what our neighbors are doing since there is so much back and forth between the members of the Charlottesville population and those around us. So if you go to the next slide, please. This is just an overview of where we've been for the last 14 days. You can see the line that if we were in a straight line where we would be. But starting with Christmas Day up through today, you can see the top line is our CDC incidents per 100,000, and it's been up and down, but mostly up. And then if you look at the lower line, that is our actual number of cases over the same time period. And again, it's not quite what a straight line would be. But you can also look at the last few days has been much more of an increase than we had been over time. So this is the overall look, and now we'll get into more of the detail. This slide has lots of numbers on it, so let me tell you what some of them are. You have seen some of this in previous meetings, and this goes back to the 29th of December, where you can see in the second column, the CDC cases per 100,000, how our numbers have gone up over the last however many days that they are here. When we last met in December, the numbers were, had it right in front of me. When we met December the 17th, we were at 365. We're now at 453, so you can see that that has been an increase. Is this the largest we've ever been? No, it's not. We were larger in the beginning of October as we were finishing the surge from fall return to school for everybody. But right now, we are at 453. The number of cases for the last 14 days, some have questioned why I show that. I understand that the 453 is a standardization factor, but to let us see exactly where we are, not trying to diminish or increase the, the information. But where we are is 218. And you can see over the last 10 or 11 days, we have had steady increases from having 135 over 14 days. A couple of days after Christmas to today, we had 218 cases over the last 14 days. So we are steadily increasing. Our positivity rate, based on the CDC factors, we started out the end of the year in the 3% range, which is considered at a lower risk. Starting on the 3rd of January, we moved into the moderate risk. We're at now 5.9 using the CDC metrics over a 14-day. So those three columns are CDC information based on 14-day numbers. The next column can be confusing. The 65.9 listed today says there were 65.9% more cases in the past seven days, so January 1, January 7, compared to the last seven days of 2020. So when you see those numbers, we're getting more and more cases in the last week compared to the previous week. Then the last couple of columns are the Virginia Department of Health columns, and they look strictly at the four, the seven-day rate. These others are 14 days. This is seven. So you can see we have been pretty much steadily going up on the seven-day rate. This is an average, rolling average over the past seven days. We're up to 40.4 for today, which is some of the highest that we've been, not the highest, but pretty high. For the seven-day positivity rate, you can see that on 1231, we moved from a lower risk to a moderate risk level for positivity percentage. And today, we went up a full percentage point for the seven-day rate. And then in the last column is the number of new cases per day for the last seven days, just so that you can see how we have been going up over the last seven days. When you compare the 218, if it, everything was pretty equal, half of 218 is whatever that number is. I'm not going to try to figure it up in my head right now. But it's not as high as 136. So this shows you that some of our higher numbers are occurring in the last seven days as compared to the previous. We had almost reached a low after we got out for the winter break, and then it has started going back up since Christmas. So looking at the last seven days, to me, is a very important factor while we're also watching the CDC 14 days. Both the red column and the dark blue column indicate numbers that are not in ranges that we want them to be. They indicate the highest level of, of risk. Again, the red column works with 14 days. The blue column works with seven days. Next slide, Ms. Thacker. So where are we compared to our neighbors? This looks at last Thursday, this past Monday, and today with neighboring school divisions. So you can see, if you follow the line across just for Charlottesville, our CDC number has gone from 322 to 340.8 to 45, 453.1. And our positivity rate has gone from 3, 5. And our positivity rate has gone from 3, 5.1, 5.9. So you can look across at many of our neighbors. Yes, Charlottesville and Albemarle still have the lower positive rates for percentages for positivity. Again, how UVA numbers factor in that, not exactly sure because UVA is not doing as much testing right now. They still are testing, and even today, there were 29 positive cases within the UVA population. You can, though, look at some of our other neighbors who have got really high CDC numbers and high positivity rates. So this is all CDC information. And the reason these school divisions are selected is I was told by the high school that these would be some of the school divisions that our athletes or other Virginia High School League activities would participate in. So that's why especially Goochlin and Orange are on here. Next slide, Ms. Thacker. Here are the same divisions, looking just at the Virginia Department of Health seven-day rate. Anytime you see dark blue, sort of like the red in the other ones, it's not good. And you can see a lot of dark blue here. Again, Charlottesville and Albemarle over the seven-day rates still better than some of our neighbors, but we are continuing to go up. Our seven-day rolling average just in the last week has gone from 24.3, and anything over 14.3 is considered the highest risk. So you've got 24.3 to 27 to today, 40.4. Positivity rate for that seven-day in the last week has gone from 5.1 to 7.4. So we're seeing steady increases over the last seven days. The Blue Ridge positivity rate was mentioned earlier. It was 10.1% today for the entire Blue Ridge region. Couple of other metrics that we're looking at that are not listed here, but they were mentioned earlier. We know that when we look at the CDC metrics, we've got core indicators, which are the the case rates and the positivity rates and all of the mitigation that Ms. Powell has been sharing with us. But there are some other numbers that we also look at, some we don't have much we can do about, and so we don't really display them. One of them is that percent change that I showed you where we were 65% higher this last seven days over the previous seven days. That is considered one of the indicators. We also look at our regional hospital rates. We can't change that, but it is reported to us every day. The hospitals that are attributed to Charlottesville, which I make the assumption are UVA and Martha Jefferson, are currently at 84.1 occupancy rate, which is considered moderate risk. And then for the percent of hospital beds that are occupied by COVID patients for the same region, we're at 15.7, which is in the higher risk. It's not considered red, but it would be in the orange if we had that displayed. So those are metrics that we we follow, but would not be a major thought process for what we are doing to to look at. So I know we've got lots of information that I've just shared. Before I talk about vaccinations, are there any questions about all of the numbers?
I can't see everybody, so if you have questions, go ahead.
I've put them all to sleep, Ms. Torres.
I doubt that.
Well, can I just ask, Dr. Baptist, looking at all of this, it seems like just about everything is going in the wrong direction. Is there, are there any bright spots here that are not going in the wrong direction?
Um, not really. I mean, right now, everything is in an upward trend. It is best better that for Charlottesville and Albemarle, our numbers are less. But we have to remember Charlottesville is not an island because we've got people coming in and people going out every day. So there's so much movement back and forth. That's why I share with you the information for the other nearby localities. Looking at these numbers, knowing about the Christmas travel, which for many people probably ended Sunday, we haven't reached the surge. Or we're beginning the surge. Anybody who traveled over Christmas or had some of the smaller social gatherings were probably seeing some of the numbers now, but it could be another two to three weeks before we get full impact of that if it is in the same pattern as Thanksgiving. Because when I showed you December the 17th, where we were, we were still somewhat in the surge of Thanksgiving, and that had been three weeks ago. So I can't for sure tell you what's going to happen next, but I'll be surprised if we start down much, if any, for the next couple of weeks. I'd love to. And I do update these numbers every day as soon as I get them, so they they are available for you to see.
So, um.
Go ahead, Mr. Wade.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dr. Baptist, I think that what the public and probably the 60 people that are tuned in this evening would like to know is like, with these numbers, what does that mean based on the parameters that we set, you know, last month or that we have been working on? Does that mean that we go back? Or is that, you know, part of our discussion? I think that that's like, you know, because this chart here is just like, you know, usually after four or five numbers, it's people start to glaze over. This has a little bit more than that, so.
Right.
So just, you know, what's, you know, your your bottom line, like, analysis or summary of what this means?
Ms. Thacker, will you go back to the the slide that is CDC and VDH risk factors for the last 10 days? Mr. Wade, normally what you have been looking at is the first few columns with the red and orange. The CDC metrics are what has been recommended to school divisions to use as part of their decision-making, but not to look at just one metric. Anything over 200 in the cases per hundred thousand is considered at the highest risk. We have been in the over 200 now for just about all of the time since they've started this metric back the end of September. We have gotten close to going below 200. But you can see we're now double that, and the numbers are going up. So, you know, you know, what that tells me is that for this community, that is considered one of the the highest risk for transmission. But we don't want to look just at one number. So I guess, you know, I'm trying to share with you the information that we have for the board to look to decide with this information, what do we think is the best and safest thing for our students? Now, this is community. This is not within our schools. This is the community. And since most of our students have not been in schools, we we don't have a lot of information about, you know, what is is going on with them. We can see where outbreaks might be occurring in other school divisions. But I think the numbers that really need to be looked at here would be the cases over the last 14 days, whether they're going up and down. And we did talk on the 17th of December that we wanted to see that number return to or start moving toward closely to 200. We're not doing that at this point. Look at the positivity rate. You can see that that's continuing to go up. And look at the seven-day rate, the the dark blue, and see that it's continuing to go up. So right now, as Doc Kraft said, our numbers are sort of going in the wrong direction to consider for the overall community.
I'm sorry, what is the blue number ideally should be again?
The blue number under the VDH daily case rate, anything over 14.3 is considered the highest risk.
Okay, thank you.
And well, you can see I've got up in there, one threshold is five, and then the half threshold is 10. And then anything above 14 is considered the highest.
Uh, yeah, okay.
And then for those positivity rates, anything between three and five is this green color, and then this, I'm not sure what this other color is, but puts us at a moderate risk.
So, Dr. Baptist, I think it'd be very helpful to talk about the vaccinations, just so that we can have the a really big picture of what, because I think there's just obviously multiple layers to these decisions.
Right. So I guess where the good news part comes in, Dr. Kraft, is his next piece about the vaccinations. We are getting, at the beginning of having the vaccinations, there was a meeting, Dr. Atkins, Ms. Powell, and I met with Ryan McKay the other day to really talk about how they might be able to use our facilities for COVID-19 vaccination sites. And you may have seen the the temporary building that's now over at the Kmart parking lot. But asked him, you know, what we could do that could help. He's given us some information about volunteering. So I think we've got several people within the school division that are going to try to sign up with the Medical Reserve Corps to be volunteers, not only to give the shots, because some of us can't do that, but some of the clerical-type tasks that can be done. One of the things the Health Department has said that is slowing them down a little bit is having enough people to actually give the shots. And I was shocked to find out that anyone who gives the vaccinations has to have 20 to 22 hours of training to give the shots, including the skill-based assessment. So it's not just, I've been giving shots for years, I can now give this. But I think some of us will try to volunteer to help with some of the other pieces. So we are in the 1B group. And along with several others, that was announced officially yesterday by Governor Northam. And today, I got a survey, and I have submitted our number of employees to include full-time, part-time, hourly, and those that we think might be substituting to give the Health Department ballpark figure of the number that we might need. That doesn't mean that everybody in within that number will get tested or won't get tested, but we've given them a number. And then the expectation is we will get another survey soon, and I'll submit names and email addresses to the Health Department. The Health Department will then send out individual emails to each employee for the employees to make their appointments to get the first vaccination. And I did see something today that they said they hoped 1B would be early spring. I'm hoping early spring is more like late winter so that we can go ahead and and get the the first vaccination, realizing that with the Moderna vaccine, which is what we will have in this area, we will be taking two shots at least three weeks apart. So the good news is, Dr. Kraft, vaccines are coming. They're not here as fast as we want them to be. And there is a site on the Virginia Department of Health website that you can look every day to see how many vaccines have been given in each locality. And as of today, Charlottesville has had 2,465 vaccines given. So we're on, we've started. Questions?
I just really want to encourage and ask how we are going to encourage our staff to get vaccinated. This being a critical component to, I don't know, the well-being of our community. Is there any, are there any plans to support, I don't know, promoting getting a vaccination?
We will certainly work with staff that to, if, you know, based on the time of their appointments, to have coverage for them if needed to go get the shots. We'll encourage them to get the shots. We are not going to make anybody take the shot. But if someone doesn't take the shot and we have an outbreak or some problem, you know, within the school system, we may have to have them not be in the building as we would for any other communicable disease that we would would have. But we're certainly hoping that our staff will want to take the shots. Our nurses are in the 1A group. Their names and email addresses have already been sent in, and we're hoping that they will get theirs within the next week or two. And so that would be good to have have them done. And as the last bullet on here is, I'll be the point of contact between the school division and the the Health Department, so that I'll keep trying to do what I can to get our information to them so that we can have the vaccinations.
Dr. Baptist? One of the other ways in which we will be encouraging our community and our staff members is by volunteering, submitting our names to be volunteers. Brian made us aware that when individuals see familiar faces, that makes them more likely to want to come and receive the vaccination. So I think our presence during the time that that we are engaging our 1B group and our teachers and our staff would be encouragement for others to come in. We'll be sending out communications and remind our staff the Health Department is looking for them to sign up. So we'll help to get those messages out to our staff.
I'm sure Dr. Atkins will volunteer like some of our country leaders have to get hers on air, so that will encourage the others to come into it.
Think we'll all.
Or maybe not.
Maybe not. But we we will definitely be there for our staff.
Yes.
And help to encourage them to make a decision to get theirs.
I also want to note that there's this like concept right now called the Vaxi, which is basically a selfie with your vaccination. So not necessarily when they're giving you the shot, but certainly after the shot. You know, so there are minor, minor effects of the vaccination, but two people in my household are volunteer firefighters, so they both received their first shot yesterday. And I just really want people who have any concerns about the vaccine to really research it. The science is really there to support the vaccine. And I think the only issue that we are having as a school division and as a community is just availability of the vaccine and and just kind of the the process. But as soon as that's in place, I really do want people to think about very, and and research and get their concerns allayed because it's, it is safe and it is something that will really support our community as all of the other vaccinations that we have received since we were children have done too. So I'm sorry, Dr. Kraft, just.
And Ms. McKeever, I will assure you, I'll be, as soon as as the Health Department says that I can get mine, I will get it. I think we do have to acknowledge that in our Black community, there is some reluctance from past history and and how medical tests have been run in the past with African-American communities. There is some reluctance for that community, for our community to come out and to readily be first in line to receive the vaccine. However, we will be there. There are many African-Americans in our community who have said they will take the vaccine. And we will be there to encourage others to take it also. So this is all of us together. This is a part of the village, and we will all be there together. We care about the health and the well-being and the safety of all of our community members. And our Black community has been disproportionately affected by COVID, and we want to encourage everyone in that community to take the vaccine.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. I agree. Ms. McKeever, to your point as far as education and support that we might offer to staff or anybody who who has questions, there are a lot of great resources right within our community. You know, I don't anticipate or don't begin to think that everybody tunes into Facebook on Monday, but Dr. Cameron Webb, Dr. Tyson Bell, both UVA physicians hold great sessions, question-answer sessions regarding COVID, updates about the vaccinations. I don't know if if they've put out anything as far as, you know, an info session that we could make available to our employees if they have questions or to set something up like that. But that's, you know, those are great leaders and experts right here at UVA. So that would be something I would I would love to see if we consider, can consider.
We'll certainly work to see if we can get that and to see what anything else that the Health Department can give. And I've heard also that Dr. Fauci will be on Facebook tomorrow.
Yes, I believe so. The other point, and if anybody else has questions, please speak up here in a minute. But I did want to back to some of the the metrics, you know, as far as the school metrics that VDH puts up, you know, and I know we we haven't really talked too much about the percentage of of hospital beds in the region. I mean, you you mentioned it, but I I do feel like it is critical and an important number to track and, you know, because there are people outside of our localities that are, you know, feeding into these hospitals. And these numbers are changing rapidly. And in my my daytime job, I'm seeing that firsthand and personally, so I really do encourage. So I really do encourage us to, to keep, keep that in mind as that is a concern in my. If there's anything else, does anybody else have any questions or Dr. Baptist, did you have anything else here?
No, thank you, I'll, I'll keep plugging in the numbers.
Thank you for all your work here. All right.
Ms. Torres, we have some continuation of, of this presentation, I'd like to make a recommendation to the board now.
Oh, absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you. On December the 17th, the board gave permission for staff to continue working towards returning face-to-face using the Model A. For our students. And to come back at this board meeting, the December, January 7th board meeting to review the metrics. To confirm or to change that January 19th return to face-to-face date. Staff has worked diligently towards preparing our, our teachers and our curriculum to transition to face-to-face. However, after looking at the metrics, reviewing those metrics. Realizing that we want to make sure that we have student and staff safety as our priority. Along with the consideration of the community transmission. And the eminence of the COVID-19 vaccination for school personnel. We are recommending to the board that we push out the return to face-to-face learning, Model A. From January the 19th to February 22nd. During that time, we would hope to see the community transmission rate be decreasing, start to decrease, have a significant decline. We'd also hope during that time that we will get more information about the vaccinations. And that we would be underway in getting our staff, our teachers and our staff involved in getting the, the vaccination. So at this time, we'd recommend to the school board. In that we return face-to-face using Model A, February 22nd, 2021. We would also recommend that during the February meeting, our school board meeting, that we again review the metrics. To ensure that we are headed in the right direction as we move towards February 22nd. And we do have here on the screen as a reminder what those options look like. For our elementary school students, pre-K through six, we would bring back our pre-K through two students. They would be face-to-face and that would be those students in those grade levels whose families have already indicated that they want face-to-face learning. Then we would bring back our high-risk population from grades three through six. And that would be students who are special education based on our teacher recommendation. Teacher and parent recommendation. We'd also bring back our English language learners who are at level one and two. We would also look at students who are struggling academically. And school-based teams will make decisions as to which students would be coming back into the building. And then we would have the A model for Beaufort and for Charlottesville High School. In both of, at Beaufort and Charlottesville High School, we have the models that we have set up will preserve. The qualities that we have developed right now in our virtual learning. While bringing in again a select group of students, almost at-risk students into our building for face-to-face learning. And we would be recommending that all of our students, pre-K through 12, would follow the February 22nd date for returning.
Ms. McKeever?
Hey, thank you. So I think that February 22nd is far too soon. I think our board meeting is in the early part of February. I know we have a budget meeting on like February 17th or something. So I'm not quite sure what you're talking about in terms, I, I feel like if we review the data the first week of February, by the third week of February. Then the, the data could be very, very, very different. So what I would, I mean, I think we could review the data at the February 17th meeting. And then maybe three weeks later we start rather than at, which I think the, the first week in February is going to be. Very similar numbers, if not worse numbers than we are seeing right now, again, because of the community spread. That I think, you know, pretty, like if you look at projections, we're not projected to kind of hit the peak of this. Community spread surge until February 22nd-ish. So I, I feel like it's premature to talk about February 22nd as a potential date. I think we could, I think it also stresses out our staff whenever we review this data and information. So I think the kind of anxiety that obviously is very prevalent in our community around when we're going to start school. We just need to have a little bit more certainty than like in the next three weeks, we're going to look again at this data. Like if we could just have a solid six weeks of this is what we're doing, we'll look again on February 17th. And then decide if we're going to open like three weeks later, because again, I want to give plenty of time to staff. To, to get back into their classrooms and do the, whatever they need to do in the, the class. But so that's kind of what I was thinking about the recommendation. I just, I think if we look at the, my, my goal, actually frankly, as I think we should. Go back and at the after-spring break, that would be my, I mean, I feel like the first week in March is okay. I mean, sorry, February 17th is like a concession I'm making because of your recommendation being February 22nd. But I personally would rather just see the third nine weeks go virtual and just stop having all of this anxiety and unknown things. Now again, I'm not afraid necessarily this time of UVA students coming back. I am afraid that this, that getting the vaccine widely available, getting the Biden administration to demonstrate some federal leadership. And then getting our numbers in a more controlled area, those three things are going to take time. And I just want to have less of this anxiety being ramped up every time we have a meeting. And more certainty until we can get some of these other factors more. All these other balls rolling in the, in the direction we need them to, to roll. Yeah, also, I think many of the. So I'm just going to keep talking, sorry, I, I know everybody else has a lot to say too, but I, I'm afraid I'm not going to have another opportunity to say something. But I think many of the Model A components for Beaufort and Walk and the high school can start today. Like I don't think we need to have additional school board approval to start some of the Model A components. If our students need person, in-person support. And our teachers are willing to do that and the principals work with families and the transportation to make that happen, we should do that. And the reason I say that is because. VHSL is transporting students, we are transporting students to VHSL events right now. And I, I, so that doesn't require school board approval. So I don't think that we necessarily need school board approval to do in-person. One-on-one or group work with students who really need that, especially at Beaufort and, and the high school. Because it doesn't have that disruption that Model A has for the elementary school. Also, just because of the, I mean, again, I want to get kids back to school, especially our K-2. But given some of the disruption that that means to families, I mean, let's just be real, it's also my family. I mean, I have a fourth grader and a first grader and it would, will, just like all families in our division have done, we would roll with the punches. If we could minimize the disruption to families and staff about around childcare by splitting up elementary schools. Because by waiting a couple more weeks to go in person. And then just having everybody go back in person, those who chose at the beginning, you know, with the survey that they wanted to go back, I think that would. I think that would be really helpful. But again, and also I think it would help with the, with that, what Mr. Fiero mentioned about the. The, the virtual remote centers, learning centers that we have in our community. So that's what I have to say right now, so thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever, anybody else?
I would like to add, if I could, Madam Chair. I would just agree with what Ms. McKeever was saying. That this every revisiting it every month, every three weeks and just pushing the date out without a real reasoning behind it. If teachers are in Group 1B and they're scheduled for early spring, that's a good reason to wait. Early spring will give us more opportunities for outside type of. Room to be outside because the temperature will be more forgiving. And where everyone is in just like a world of anxiety every time we have these meetings. And the dates are very arbitrary at this point, we're in the middle of a surge. And so I think that we just need to pause all the dates, moving another date, another week. Because the, the date to go back in February is still, we're in the surge. So I just think we need to just let it settle for a while, let the new administration come in. Let the teachers get the vaccine and the people who are coming into contact with students get the vaccine. And then we can do a little clearer picture. And also in this process, we are missing the opportunity to fix the gaps in virtual learning. So you know, there are equity concerns. And I've spoken to Ms. Fiero at the, about the, you know, the, the remote learning centers. And so instead of putting all of our resources and efforts into one more meeting in February and then maybe. Let's put those efforts into making virtual learning right now equitable for those students who need it right now. Instead of putting all these resources into pushing it out one more month when, in all honesty, we're still going to be on the surge. So, and it's a lot of anxiety and virtual is far from perfect. But we need to be focusing on what we have and virtual is what we have and we need to make it work. Instead of putting all of our resources into where we want to be instead of, you know, where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Craft, Dr. Kraft?
Okay, well, you know, for sure, you know, in terms of where we are now. In terms of the surge, you know, I, I certainly think we're not ready to be back in person. So I would agree with that. My feeling is. I don't know, I think the vaccines are such a game changer. And we're not exactly sure about the timing of that. When I listened to the governor yesterday or Tuesday, whenever it was. I felt like there was a really good chance that the process was going to move faster. Now, we don't know that, but I think the combination of what he's doing and putting this other person in charge of it. And ramping that up plus new administration and the resources and money that will be put toward vaccination. I think there's a reasonable chance that the, the 1B group. Will actually be starting sooner. And that I, you know, my thought and hope would be that perhaps even by the end of February. That the teachers and the education personnel would be vaccinated. So. You know, I don't know exactly what to do about the dates. I'm not comfortable now saying that we should just stay virtual for the entire third nine weeks. You know, I'm not there yet. And I guess what I'd like to do is just see. We are pushing it back, I'd like to see when we can actually have a reasonable idea of vaccinating our teachers. And I think that will make a big difference. The one other comment I have in terms of Model A. You know, we had gotten a lot of feedback about concerns about, you know, that we're sort of, we don't have a plan for three to six. Grades three to six and exactly when they'll be going back. And I wonder if we could take this time to, to work on that piece a little bit more. So, you know, there are a lot of families that have kids K to two and then they have other kids three to six. And perhaps that's something we could take a look at. Because it seemed like we were kind of leaving that group hanging perhaps a little bit too much. So I don't know if February 22nd is the right, you know, the right date now, I really just don't know. It's really hard to say, I don't think it can be before that. And it may be a little bit after that, so. Yeah, so that's where I am, I guess I don't want to keep revisiting it like every two weeks. But, you know, I really, I think we just have to try to get. Our kids back as soon as we can, you know, some of our kids, we have to get this rolling as soon as we can. And we're not quite sure when that is yet, but I'm really hoping the vaccines will help us to answer that question. And that that process will go more quickly.
Yes, Madam Chair, I agree, I'm really, you know, I'm thinking about what Jennifer said and. I support us, you know, if any kids can go back now based on state guidelines, one-on-one type of thing. I think we, we should, we should definitely do that because I know that, that the virtual is just not working with. A lot of our, our students and we're doing what, what we can. And I don't like the, you know, what, what we're doing, you know, as far as. Said in a date and said, we'll look at and then make a decision. But I really don't see what any other options we, we have, because I want the kids to come back as soon as we can. But if we had said like on 17th, when we, 16th, when we met in December, that we're going to set the date for January 19th, no matter what. Then we would be in, making some changes now. So I think we have to give ourselves some flexibility there if we want the kids to come back sooner than the, than the nine weeks. So I think that the method we have now is, I think, the best that we can with the vaccination in place. Maybe things can get done sooner than the nine-week gap, if, if you, if you will, so. You know, it's just, it's just difficult. And I think I, I've heard that, you know, as far as kind of catching up, we heard it from some speakers today is that. That maybe next school year, maybe even later this year, if we're able to get back in person, that we add on some time. Every day, definitely next year, I like to add another, as much as we, as much as we can on the day. So that we can start to maybe make up for some of those, this time that we've missed. And I know that we're educating them now, but I think that that face-to-face for most kids is, is ideal. So that's, that's my position. Just to kind of sum up, I think that we definitely can't do it this month, the numbers are just off the chart. And, and I think February the 22nd seems reasonable at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Wade, Ms. Purrier, or Mr. Brian?
I'm here.
Go ahead, Mr. Bryant, sorry, Ms. Purrier.
Based on what I, you know, I remember December, we discussed that we would, you know, revisit. The opening of schools based on the metrics and we did so tonight. And I am in agreeance with looking at the February date, staff and administrators are really working hard. In getting these schools prepared, a lot of the folks who were doing, working to do so. The good news is that we will have a vaccine hopefully. Soon that our teachers and staff can, can get the vaccination, that's a source of relief. I know virtual is not working well for a lot of students, that does worry me as a retired educator. But I think it's reasonable to have February 20, what, 22nd. Because we had agreed that we would relook at the opening dates based on the metrics as a board. It could very well be February, it could very well not, based on the metrics. You got to remember that in Charlottesville, we have students who are coming, once we get up and rolling. An opening of schools, we have students coming in from many jurisdictions around us. So if they're coming from a place where the metrics are very high, you know, that could, you know, that could change a lot of the scenario. But anyway, I am in agreeance with that recommendation to relook at opening of the schools with Model A in February.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, Ms. Purrier.
In December, we indicated that we would review when we came back in.
In December, we indicated that we would review when we came back in January. And a proposal has been put forth to us this evening. I presume that our superintendent has spoken to all of the people that have worked diligently to begin on the nineteenth, i.e. the people that are doing the work. The principals and the people in the building, the instructors. Yes, there is a vaccine. We may have it late February. We may have it early March. But I feel that today is the seventh, three weeks from now. Four weeks from now, a little bit, a little bit over, four weeks from now, we will meet again. And if the metrics have changed, the twenty-second, I think was the date given, may still be able to work. If we're in the fifteen percent range, it won't work. But I think that we have sufficient time to between now and early February. If we need to change, to change. But I feel that however, that date was derived, there was a pedagogical reason for it. I'm not sure that if we went back after spring break, what impact that would have on our students academically. And so for me to vote to change to after, opening after spring break, I would need to hear from a pedagogical standpoint, an academic learning standpoint, what implications from February twenty-second to after spring break would make for our students. I'm comfortable with the date and the recommendation that came forth from our superintendent this evening.
I would just like to note that I made the concession because I want to have to start after spring break. I concede that that's a long way off, but that we, the anxiety that staff and this community have about uncertainty is dramatic. And never mind, like, we just sent out this lovely email and communication. The February twenty-second data caught the attention of everybody and they started texting saying, what is this date? And that date, I, when I spoke to, it is arbitrary, just plain arbitrary. We could do it the twenty-second, we could do it the following week and we could do it the week after our March seventh board meeting or whatever that is. So it is again, February twenty-second is when it's, the projection is, the governor's projection to be the peak of this surge. I just don't, I don't know why we're going to continue to live, have our staff live in anxiety about when we're going to go back to school for all of this. And then like the, you know, I cannot imagine on February fourth in four weeks that we're going to make the decision or that the numbers have improved in such a way that the February twenty-second date is going to So I'd encourage us to think a little bit more strategically about what we've already asked our teachers and community to do and what we're continuing to ask for the, from them and to to consider a three-week change from February twenty-second to the, I I think it's like the week or two after our March, March fourth board meeting, we could start March fifteenth. Again, because it's arbitrary, there's no pedagogical reason for this. I just feel like we have three balls in the air. None of, and I'm positive that things are going to go in the right direction. We just don't want to know when that's going to be. And I just think, given the anxiety in our community, we could give our staff a break and our parents a break and just have a little bit more certainty. Thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah, I understand what you, what you're saying. You're saying in, in three or four weeks, we still may be in the same position where we are now as far as with the numbers, but and we, we, at that time, we would likely put off the twenty-second as as well. So you're saying just go ahead and put it to March fifteenth or so.
Dr. Kraft. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wade.
No, I just, I think that that's, I I will be agreeable to that. I think I could support that.
Dr. Kraft, you're muted.
Muted. I'm wondering if we might incorporate into whatever we do tonight, the the vaccination process. And so it seems like maybe what we could say is now, at this point, because we know it's coming, that we would support, you know, delaying our in-person return until our, our teachers and staff have been vaccinated, have received the two vaccines. And that the, at that, the end of that period, whatever that is, it could be sooner, it could be a little later, that that would really be the time when I think what we could, you know, with more confidence, you know, and with the staff feeling more confident going back into the schools, I think we really, you know, safely could do that at that point. So maybe that's something we could also include in our motion, whatever motions we make this evening.
So, Dr. Kraft, are you saying after they receive both of the vaccines or the first vaccine?
I think both of the vaccines.
I just didn't hear you. That's why I asked.
Yes, I I would think both of the vaccines. I mean, I'm not a doctor, but my understanding is that, you know, the first vaccine provides about sixty percent. But I think the two vaccines provide over ninety percent. And I know that they're, if it's Moderna, they're twenty-eight days apart. I do know that. So, but it seems like, you know, given where where the virus is in our community and now given that we're on the threshold of a vaccination process, that that should be really part of our decision-making at this point for for the sake of our staff.
I I would tend to agree with that. I guess I would like to pose a question to everybody to see what you think. I feel like if and when we know and our staff are receiving that first vaccination, depending on which vaccine it is, it is either twenty-one days or twenty-eight days for that second one. So that would be, in my opinion, a great time to reconvene, to have a discussion about how is it looking as far as setting a date for that return for face-to-face. I I do feel, as I think all of you have stated, that the vaccines are crucial and important for the safety, you know, of of all staff. You know, from bus drivers all the way up to, you know, the support staff in the buildings, teachers with, you know, the variant that is is prevalent and and I'm sure it's here. You know, it's, it's pretty much, you know, we're seeing numbers spike at all levels. So I, I feel strongly and I I would be supportive of that and I'm curious to see what you all think about that.
So Lisa, are you saying that if everyone received the vaccine on February twenty-eighth, between the twenty-eighth and the second vaccine, the board would reconvene to select a date to open schools? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying yes, that that at that point, once we know, you know, the last person who has opted in to receive that vaccine has has received it, we can start the clock. You know, depending, dependent on which vaccine is issued and, you know, look forward three to four weeks, but also be watching the data, you know, and and incorporating that into it. So, yes.
So I don't quite understand what you're saying would be the projected start date. I mean, we're looking at right now a date that Rosa has recommended February the twenty-second, Jennifer has a proposal for March fifteenth. And what is your I mean, what is your, are you saying at the twentieth, we would look at that point to start a date or what?
What I'm saying is, I guess my question is, how important is is the vaccine to us as a board? As far as our staff and everybody receiving that as, you know, one of the factors of of when we are going to feel comfortable for everybody to return to the building. So we don't know, we don't have an answer. We are all hopeful that that this is going to be faster than than spring. So I guess that's the first question. Is is that a piece, you know, is that piece, our staff being vaccinated one of the determinants that we want to use to when we feel comfortable?
Yeah, I I guess I still want to look at the numbers because I, because even if all of the staff, you know, that opts in for the vaccination, what if, you know, the numbers, all the other numbers that Beth talked about before are still kind of out of whack? So, yeah, so I mean, I guess I will be less, I will be a little bit reluctant just to, again, we're not looking at just one number. So maybe I would support if we factored that in with the other numbers that we consider.
Right. I mean, I'm not saying that those other numbers, I mean, of course, those are, those are really, really important, but but knowing the vaccine is on board could, could make a little bit of a difference, you know, maybe more, more students, you know, in that group A are comfortable being phased back in.
I think we just need to keep looking at both, all of the factors and not, you know, I just, until we feel a little bit more comfortable about where we are. I mean, we're just at the beginning of this surge is what I'm concerned about. And that's why I just want to give a little bit of relief to our staff saying, hey, you guys have been working really hard. We appreciate it. What can we do in this context? And then, and then, like, I want everybody to have both vaccines, but that could be really summer. I mean, if we're just being really honest, what Dr. Baptist said was, what did you say, late spring, early spring? And we were hoping for early winter. I mean, like, we're hoping for late winter. They said early spring. And that's like a pretty significant, that could be anywhere from mid-February to mid-April. And you know, we we got to get a handle on the numbers. And I think what, if we look at it on February fourth and see what we currently see, which I can't imagine we're going to see much different, unless we start the vaccination on January twenty-eighth, which is highly unlikely, then February twenty-second is unrealistic at this point. And so if we could look again at the second meeting in February, our budget meeting, we can say, wow, these numbers are looking better. They're look, you know, because maybe, maybe we've peaked and maybe we've come over, maybe the vaccinations have started. Then I think it'll be more realistic, the kind of the broader view. I mean, if everybody got vaccinated in the next forty-five days, let's start school on the forty-sixth day. That's, we can always make that decision. But none of that seems likely, even if everything goes in our favor.
And can I just add that I I think that the idea of waiting for the vaccine dates would give us a a better plan to start with. I was just speaking against the February twenty-second, the date, not another meeting, but just that the date is arbitrary. I think that we need to take into consideration a number of factors, but I just don't want to set a date and we keep chasing a date and it raises up everyone's anxiety. Instead of chasing a date, let's put some, you know, expectations in place about what we need to be back, like the vaccine being rolled out for teachers and for our numbers. Because of the date chasing is just, it's creating more stress than there needs to be. And we've done, you know, we've gone back and forth as a school board and as a community, but we've gotten this far along. And it would be a shame when we're this close to the vaccine and we're in the middle of the surge for us to make just a decision because we're all getting COVID fatigue. I just think it's better if we really base it on what we know is coming and instead of setting a date, just set a a goalpost like the first vaccine for teachers and then let's revisit it, whatever that date will be.
I think you're putting a lot of weight on the vaccine because you're making a presup, presupposition that everyone in the school division is going to get the vaccine. So if fifty percent of the people in the division get the vaccine and you use that as a basis for opening school, what does that mean?
We can take any factor into consideration. I just don't want to set a dead date and like a drop-dead date anymore because that's what's causing the anxiety, the date, nothing else added in. Like, we can, February twenty-second, we could say like, it's great, let's do it. But I don't want to say today, let's go back February twenty-second and we'll revisit it if, because it just up, down.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, Lashandra. I just wanted to say that if we select a date, then whatever date is selected, it would be selected on the basis of something, whatever we, whatever the board feels the something should be. But I don't think that the mitigating factor or the leading factor should be the vaccine because you just don't know how many people are going to do it. The statistics that Dr. Baptist brings to us are very clear. The numbers are up or the numbers are down. And if we say that our cutoff is X percentage based on the information that she brings us, that's something definitive because you know what that is. If you're using the vaccine as your basis and forty percent of the people take the vaccine, then you've got sixty percent of the people hanging out there. And I just, I think the vaccine is important. I am not saying that it's not, but I'm not convinced that that can be a driving factor because you know, it it is not as, it is not, the vaccine is important, but it is not as definitive as the numbers that Dr. Baptist brings. That's what I'm saying.
Well, then we can absolutely set the numbers, but let's wait and revisit the numbers and not set a date before we revisit the numbers. That's my only suggestion. Whatever we pick, let's use that as the basis and not the date just set arbitrarily in the future.
Okay, so that's another option out there. There's no, no date at all. So that's, that's another. So what is this, try to come up with seven to really confuse the staff here? So.
You're up, Mr.
We, we have talked about the metrics, you know, we have talked about relying on certain numbers, you know, for our decision-making. And so, you know, I, yeah, I think that that is important and the numbers have to be a lot different than they are right now. You know, and so I, you know, and I think we just won't know. So I think one of the things we could say is that, you know, unless the numbers go back into the like either under two hundred cases, per capita cases or a certain positivity rate that we're not prepared to, you know, return to in-person. So we could say that. I, I don't know. I mean, I don't think the vaccine is the deciding factor, but to me, I I think it's kind of, it's pretty important, like, you know, as far as the safety of our staff in the buildings. You know, we can't make everybody take it, but I think, I think a lot of people will take it and you know, understanding where the community spread is right now. Like, my daughter is a COVID tracker. And so she talks a lot about the, where it is in communities and just how explosive it is right now and how dangerous it is right now in communities. And, you know, so I think that's our reality right now. It's not safe. Period. And, you know, we can, we can say that we, we, you know, we would love our numbers to be back down by February twenty-second, but listening to everybody's comments, I, we can't say that. We just don't, won't know that. You know, we can, you know, meet and see where things are at our February meeting. But I think maybe we might just want to say we're, you know, we're not ready to set a date until we know that our numbers are below a certain threshold. So that's another way we could approach this.
Everybody, I think Dr. Baptist wanted to to share something.
One thing about looking strictly at the numbers, for us to get down to two hundred, which is considered the, the edge of the at-risk, we'll have to be down to ninety-six cases over we'll have to be down to ninety-six cases over a two-week period. We're at two hundred and eighteen cases over a two-week period right now. So it's going to take us a long time to get to where we would be at the edge of red, going below. So I would also hate to see us look at just that one number. Also, the positivity rate was mentioned. I see the positivity rate, I follow the positivity rate. I know what it is, but I still do not know how much of that is just Charlottesville and not the university included. And I keep asking, uh, since the students have been gone, less testing has been done. So I think what we've got now is a better indication of closer what our positivity rate is than what it has been, and it's going up. So if the students come back and they're doing more, more testing, our positivity rate could show lower when it's not really that lower. But again, you're getting more numbers in the denominator for figuring the percentage. I think we need to be careful of picking one metric or even just two to, to say it, if we're going to do it by the numbers. I think it's got to be a combination of all the factors you've talked about.
I, I, I think that's what our conversation really is boiling down to. That none of us, well, I personally do not feel comfortable setting a date. The numbers are clearly going in the wrong direction. We have two meetings in February, we have another meeting in, in, in January, just the work session. So we have opportunities to continue to look at the data. We're not going to turn on a dime, we're, you know, if we looked at the data in, on February 4th and said, wow, it's a miracle, everything is right, we could start on February twenty-second, but saying that now feels premature. So I would just ask and maybe make a motion to say that we will continue to look at the data, but not provide any return date specific at this point. And that, that's where we go, because the data is going to continue to include the number of people vaccinated. And so that really does change the calculus. And, you know, we've been looking at the data for ten months now, so we know how to look at the data and how to analyze it with all of the variables. So.
Is there any other data that the board needs that I'm not giving you?
Well, I, I thought the, with the hospital bed and the eighty-four percent, I thought that was very helpful, so that was helpful to me.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I apologize, go ahead.
No, go, I'll, I'll go after you.
At some point, can we see uh data for uh school divisions that are open? And um, because I remember before when we had our first meeting with the top, I'm sorry, the Blue Ridge Health District, the lovely woman, I'm forgetting her name, but she was saying, yes, she was saying what is considered an outbreak, how many there have been in schools and things like that, that public information that's available, if any of that is available, that would be nice to know.
Okay, outbreaks are published, they're on the website every Friday, not our website, the, the Virginia Department of Health website. Of course, there has not been much over the last couple of weeks, because school divisions have been closed. You ask about school divisions that are open, when you saw the information tonight about our neighboring school divisions, you've got Louisa County, numbers listed there, they are open. Green County is open, and Dr. Atkins, you may have better information about some of the other school divisions that, that are open, but I know Louisa and Green have been open from the, the list that I shared this earlier.
And, and I, I would say that some of those school divisions that have been open, they are doing the same thing that the board is doing now, looking at the metrics, evaluating it to determine whether or not they will continue face-to-face or go back to virtual learning, and some of those decisions are being made now about what to do. I, I do have great concern for the safety of our students and our staff, our, where transmission is concerned. I am very hopeful that the vaccine is on the horizon. I don't want us to lower our, our guard right now and start thinking that because it's on the horizon, that we rush in and we, we expose our students or our staff and teachers to an undue risk. I do, however, have grave concerns about our students. Our teachers have done an amazing job uh with online learning, and they have made so many adjustments. I don't think we could have, could acknowledge and praise them enough for what they have done, our principals have done a great job. However, our students are in need. Virtual is working for some students, but there are also students that virtual is not working for. Especially when you get to our high school. We have students that we're going to lose in our high schools, uh, because they're not engaged right now. And we all know that during that stage of development, students need to be connected. Connection is the most important thing for students. I don't have the answer. I appreciate the discussion and the deliberation that the board is undergoing right now, there are no easy answers. I am concerned about the safety and well-being of our teachers, but I also am concerned about our students. And I want to make sure that we give our students and our staff what each need as we're considering, how do we return to face-to-face? I don't believe that whenever the board makes the decision that it's time for us to return, that we are going to be free of COVID. The, the, the effects of COVID will still be around, the transmission may also be around. Mitigation is one of the best deterrents of transmission. And when we look at the mitigation that we have put in our school division, it, it far surpasses what CDC has recommended, it far surpasses what any organization has recommended for mitigation. So that is in place in our school, and that is one of the, the key factors in controlling transmission. So I appreciate the deliberation, I appreciate the conversation, and, and we as staff, we stand ready, whatever it is the board would like to put forward as far as our return date, we certainly can implement that. Thank you, Ms. Torres.
Can I ask Dr. Atkins, do you think, I mean, again, because of the V H S L thing, I feel really strongly that we can have students in the building, just not at a very significant level. But that the nine to eleven thing that's at the high school, I think I, I don't see that as any different than sports, frankly. And so I would propose that you start Model A at the high school in Beaufort if you need to, because I don't see that as return to school, you're still largely virtual and not, and, and many, many, many of the students are still just all virtual, so I just wonder what you think about that.
Let me make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, to implement Model A at Beaufort and the high school? Uh, and that would, that's bringing back in students who are at risk, our special education students based on I E P decisions and our English language learners?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would, especially at the high school, I, I'm, I would love to hear more about the Beauforts Plan, but I think at the high school, given that it does not disrupt the virtual learning for most of the students, you know, having this additional time for our targeted students from nine to eleven, masked with the mitigation, um, I, I just, I feel like you don't need approval to move forward with that, because you're not changing the schedule for, for students. Maybe a hundred a day, but that's not, I, I just don't see that. If students can go to sports games and practices, this to me is a lot safer than that. So that's how I see it.
If we talk about bringing back the students who are at risk, I would certainly want us to, the high school students that we consider at risk. That would also cause me to want to bring back the, the elementary school students who are at risk. To select one group that should come back in, I would struggle with that. Just bring back in high school students. Our pre, pre-K through second, third, fourth grade students, those are the years, foundational years that we're developing, and we all know that. So I think we have to take a holistic look at our entire school division to look at each group and each level as to what should work best for each of those levels and responding to the needs of the students at each of those levels.
So Jennifer, are you saying you would like to reverse the schedule? I.e. have the older children go back first and then the younger children come back, is that what you're saying?
Okay, I'm not talking about all students. What I'm saying is the high school continues with their, what they currently have, which is virtual remote learning, that um many students are, after those school hours, going to practices and interacting with faculty and students, getting on buses and going to sporting events. In addition, what I would like to see is nothing disrupt any of that, but that we continue, that we target students as market, um, the, as the target group, that we add the nine to eleven, which is what Model A proposed for the high school, is just to have some targeted students, go to the school, have some targeted instruction, return home, and then start their virtual learning day. Now, I am personally not opposed to the elementaries, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to make this more complicated than it is. I'm happy to talk about all sorts of things. You mentioned specifically losing students at the high school level. Our job is to ensure that they graduate. Dr. Iraziri, his staff know which students we need to focus on. They've already reached out to the students and families. I want those families, if they want to be back in school and they have teachers who are willing to do targeted instruction for them, can we just do that from nine to eleven, like we, like you proposed under Model A? We can talk about Beaufort, we can talk about Walker, we can talk about elementary schools. We have to do baby steps, V H S L has already started. That's why I look at the high school differently.
Jennifer, when you say that, are you talking about the February twenty-second date? Or sooner, are you?
I think she's saying immediately.
Whenever, as, whenever it can happen, I just don't want to be a barrier to that happening for our students.
Okay.
And, I mean, the thing about the elementary school Model A is it disrupts the current, what's happening currently with all of the virtual learning. And that's why, you know, I'm happy to look at the big picture and have a, and I, I don't, I know that there's a lot of plans out there. But if we can just see if we can pilot it at the high school, see how that works, get comfortable with that, then we talk again about data and dates in a month. I don't know, I'm just trying to get, make sure that our kids graduate.
So Dr. Atkins, you, I mean, you did mention, you know, concern about, about certain kids. I mean, do you have, do you have a thought about how they could be targeted and supported better? I mean, what can we do?
I think the plan that, that has been put forth for Model A is one way to target the students who are struggling and our younger students. It would be difficult logistically to have everyone following a different schedule and to just say arbitrarily, select the students that you want to come in and let them come in. We'd have to provide for transportation, we're trying to provide the food services for all of the groups of students, and if we're just arbitrarily letting individual students come in without a comprehensive plan, then they, they could be coming in at all different times of the day, missing the distribution of lunches, miss, missing distribution of breakfast. We would not have a comprehensive program in which we can ensure that we're providing for many of the needs of all of our students.
That is not, I'm suggesting that we go with Model A at the high school, which is a comprehensive plan that that you all have presented to us.
And, and I, I appreciate that. As I said, I am willing and, and our staff, the recommendations are legitimate recommendations. We can certainly work with those recommendations. And our goal is to safely get our students back into school and provide the best model possible. We're open to suggestions, uh, we're open to any of the recommendations that, that any of the board members might have. Having an open-ended, that we don't know when we're coming back, or we don't have a projected date that we're working towards, is going to be extremely difficult for us.
I mean, it's just as difficult for staff where we come back every month and push it out. Like, my anxiety is here and I'm not going back into the buildings, and so I can only imagine the stress. There are parents who are thinking their kids are going to get a different teacher, and now we're pushing it out, so that gets pushed out. It's all stressful all the way around, but we can, a projected date isn't an end-all, and it's, it's just creating more stress. I don't know how else to say it either, but I think that there's a way to do what Jennifer is saying, where there are kids, when we were talking at the last meeting where you had metrics, the high school has metrics and middle school, they have some metrics, I don't know the name of the system that says, these are the kids who are falling behind, these are the kids who are in need, where English is second language, special education, where we can focus our efforts on those children right now, while we're still virtual, because we can't go back, because we're on the uptick, to find a way to try to make it equitable right now with teachers willing to go in the building. That's what I would like to see, a model that focuses on those students most in need. We're all struggling, virtual is hard, I have two children at home, it's hard, but there are people who are struggling far more than I am, and I would like to see a model that addresses those people, the pharaohs come to every meeting and they're saying, these kids right here need help. So while we're waiting to go back face-to-face, can we come up with a model that addresses those groups right now? For some condensed portion of the day, the way special edu, something to start somewhere.
And, and are you talking about groups from pre-K through twelve or specific grade level?
All the groups, all the way through, but the high school model that Jennifer was saying is a place to start. So even if we can't have the kids in all day, every day, everyone who wants to be back, at least we can go in and have those most at-risk, even in the elementary schools, a model that works like the high school one does, or like we're currently doing right now with special education for those targeted groups that we're targeting at the high school under Plan A.
So I, I mean, I feel like we've had a lot of great discussion here, we've got a lot of concerns. I don't know if there's a way to kind of streamline or, or guide us back to just looking at whether or not we're comfortable putting a date on this. I, I don't want to table all of this necessarily, I mean, I think we need to continue to talk about it, but I think we could all continue to talk about it for an hour or more here tonight. Dr. Atkins, what, what do you need from us right now? What would be most helpful?
I think the question is to do what?
So, um, so.
So I think, what, what do I need from the board in order to do what? What is the board's goal? I, I definitely can hear that there's a desire to provide intervention for targeted groups. I'm not clear as to whether that's from our elementary level, middle school and high school, upper elementary level, all of the levels, or specific levels. In order to do that, it will require some reassigning of teachers and identifying teachers that will come in and will be assigned to come in and meet face-to-face with the students. So it will take us a while to get that, that underway in a comprehensive manner. So I think what I do need from the board is the direction of what you'd like to achieve, and then we can work on achieving that.
I mean, I feel personally like, you know, the discussion, um. I mean, I. I feel confident that we all want safety for everybody. We're all on the same page with that. There's no, there's no doubt about that. Um, you know, as far as timing, how we make that decision, what we're looking at, um, for an actual date. I, I don't, I'm not sure that we came up with an answer for that. I think, you know, we, this discussion, um, veered off a little bit because we heard, you know, that you have concerns. About certain groups. And so we are reacting to that and wanting to support you. I feel like, um, I hear what you're saying as far as if we do that for the high school students, you know, how can we not do that for everybody? But then if we do that for everybody, we're basically saying green light for, for Plan A. Um, and, and that's what we're kind of trying to hold off on. Because I don't feel, even though we have all of the mitigation in place, that we're, that we're quite there. So, um.
Could I just mention kind of where I'm getting hung up? Um, in the discussion, um, and that is. Um, what I'm hearing is that, um, to set a date. And then to keep coming back and changing the date is more stressful for the staff. And. You know, so that the staff don't want us to keep having to do that, to keep doing that. They'd like to kind of. Know, you know, with more certainty, sort of what's happening when. And I don't know if we're at the point now where we can actually do that. But that's what's bothering me, uh, you know, like here, me sitting here, I could say, yes, February twenty second, we can say that. And we can then revisit the, the data. But I'm hearing that that is actually very stressful on the staff and the staff perhaps would prefer that we. Don't keep doing that if that's at all possible. So that's where I'm getting a little bit hung up here and knowing what to, what to do. And I don't know, you know, if, if, if there's a way to hear anymore about that, am I right? Are we? Is that true? Is that what the staff are saying that, you know, to keep doing what we've been doing is more stressful on them? And they would rather that we didn't do that?
Hmm, Dr. Atkins, I have a question. On the February twenty second date. I'm sure there had been discussions with administrators and staff members, uh, in regards to how that date came about. It wasn't something that. An arbitrary date, there was a reason why that date was selected. Um, could you share some of that with us? In terms of the practice of the administrators and, and your discussions and how that date came about? Because it seems like, you know, um, teachers are feeling anxiety. There's a reason why that date was, was suggested in the recommendation.
What I understand about the, the, um, levels of anxiety about continuing to come back to review the dates. Is that every two weeks was a lot. Uh, the thought that each two weeks the board would be coming back to make a decision. Or to review the decision that was made. Uh, posed a lot of anxiety because it just left people in limbo and for such a short period of time. But stretching out further into February gives us about six weeks. In order to, uh, prepare for coming back. And to look forward if the metrics are where they need to be at that time. It also gives us some time, um, hopefully to start with, uh, the vaccinations. So that was a part of the discussion. It, it was that staff may feel a sense of relief. Having a date, but having a date far enough out. That it might be realistic that we could return at that time. But the two-week rotation was causing, uh, anxiety. Because it was so frequent. Um, now there may be other anxieties that I'm not aware of that staff may have shared. With either some of the board members or with others that are legitimate anxieties that we should consider. So I don't know that, that any of these models are the perfect models. I certainly would say that they are not. What we're trying to do is find a place in which we can land. That we have adequate time to prepare. That we try to reduce the anxiety that our staff and our teachers are feeling. But also reduce the anxiety that our parents are feeling and our students. And try to come up with the best plan and the best model to respond to all of those needs and concerns.
Thank you for that clarification.
So, um, Madam Chair, do we have a, a motion on the floor, guidance on, on the floor for consideration?
Well, I believe Ms. McKeever kinda proposed something, but I don't remember what. Was. Um, I, I was just curious. I don't have calendars in front of me. Wh- when we're looking at February, um, we have our February, pulling up the calendar right now. We have our February fourth meeting. Do we have a, a work session or something in February?
We have another school board meeting on the seventeenth or the, um, eighteenth of February to approve the budget.
It's the eighteenth.
Yeah, the eighteenth of February, we approve our budget in a school board meeting.
So, um, Jennifer, um, the, I should notice, but the date that you gave in March, was that the end of the third nine weeks?
No, the, the, I think the end of the third nine weeks is, um. Later than that, it's like a twenty-sixth or twenty-fifth. Um, we, maybe it might be even later than that, actually.
Okay, okay.
The end of the third nine weeks is April second.
Okay. Oh.
I just wanna, I just, here's what my, here, let me just propose this, like, that, um. We continue to look at the data at every board meeting, the, the. Two, the one in March, and when the data gets to be. Even close to where we're much more comfortable, that's in terms of vaccinations, that's in terms of positivity, that's encourage, all the CDC stuff. Then we talk about dates. Um, and I think anywhere from, you know, uh, you know, two to three weeks after that meeting that we say. Okay, this is, this data looks good, we'll start in three weeks. What do you think? Is that?
I, I would suggest maybe that, you know, given our conversation tonight, um, that maybe we. Um, just push it back two weeks and pick that date. Because I think, um, I think the chances of having the robust vaccination program in place are higher. Um, I think the chance of being beyond the sur- this surge are higher. And, you know, going in the right direction. So that would be another option that we just give it another two weeks.
So, so you're talking about like March the eighth or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Or as a starting or to convene to have a discussion about it?
Well, I don't think we have to convene. We have several that we could devote a small part of our budget meeting, our regular meeting. Um, um, to this. Look, have a look at the numbers.
Dr. Atkins. Um, there's Jennifer's suggestion with a proposed date of March eighth. Which is two weeks after February twenty second. Thoughts, please?
I appreciate that. Is that two weeks or is that one week?
Two.
Two.
Two. Because the twenty-second is the last.
Okay.
Monday in February and March the eighth is the second Monday in, um, February. I mean, in March, because March comes in on a Monday, March one.
We certainly can work with that.
Do, do, now, we are asking you as a board with all of your education knowledge. To. Do what Jennifer suggested with a date that Sherry has proposed of March eighth. You feel will do the same types of things as if we were on February twenty-two. The two weeks is not going to. I'm not talking about the numbers, but the two weeks will allow us to get the children in, in the designated. Um, categories as we had talked about in December, which you showed us earlier in the presentation. Remember the categories?
Yes. Yes, I, I, I certainly think that we can work with that. One of the comments that, um, a principal made today when we were discussing. The dates for returning, uh, asked if. If we could give them a forecast, whether or not we will actually be bringing students. We realistically think we're bringing students back face to face and we would get our third and fourth grade students back in face to face. Because as the principals and the, uh, teachers are making schedules and planning for instruction. Depending on how these models unfold and how we bring the students back. They're making different decisions. They're making one group of decisions based on bringing in the preschool. Um, the pre-K through second grade students and then the at-risk students at the third and fourth grade. As opposed to bringing in the preschool and then at some point bringing in the risk, at-risk students. And then later bringing in more of our third and fourth grade students. So the more clarity that we can provide for dates and direction. For our staff, for our principals and for our teachers and for our families. I think the more successful we're going to be. And having dates, whether it be a February date or March date or later date. Having a date that we're, we're, uh, shooting for. Helps to bring some of that clarity about for planning purposes.
Can I ask, well, I hear what you're saying, like, I, I know you wanna date certain, is the March eighth date a reasonable date?
It's just as reasonable as February twenty second.
So we can look at the data at the two meetings in February, the one meeting in March. But, and, and, and anytime during that six-week period, we may decide to alter that date. But that is the date that, like, this board on this date says is okay.
Yeah, um, I, 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 I like that approach. I think that eat, whatever date we choose, we will give. Staff two or three weeks to prepare and, and the parents two or three weeks to prepare. Yeah.
Can I just offer this as, I mean, we. I'm comfortable with March eighth day. My concern at this point is what the concerns that we've heard. From parents, um, and staff about the pre-K through two returning and the three and four returning later and not really having a plan. For their return. So I wondered if anybody had concern as well that we should address or consider. Maybe not today, maybe we talk about it in two weeks, what, uh, but I just, I also don't wanna leave that like hanging because it is definitely a concern.
Uh, sorry, can I just ask a quick question? Probably to Jennifer. So Jennifer, when you were talking earlier, you said the projection for the current surge will still be in it February twenty second.
That is projected to be the peak of the surge.
And now we're saying we're gonna vote on a March eighth return.
Uh, we're trying to make sure that.
I'm sorry, the eighth is a return, not just another meeting date, but the return.
That would be the proposed return. If all of the numbers, yeah, you know, there's still a lot of uncertainty in the next two months, so. But thank you. That's a really important clarification.
All right. So I think I have heard, um. A date and kind of a motion. Are we all comfortable with that? Any more comments?
Are we saying March eighth as Model A?
Yes. That's my understanding.
Yeah, um, I'd also, I, I guess, um. Also like to, between now and, and then to, to really take a look at bringing our, you know, our third and fourth. Graders back or having a plan so that people know what's gonna be happening. And maybe condensing the, uh. You know, the rollout a little bit so that, because we're, you know, we're getting on in the year, it'll be March. And, um, maybe not waiting quite as long to bring that group back.
Seems reasonable. Anybody else? Have anything that they'd like to ask? Otherwise I will entertain that. Ms. McKeever, if you can repeat.
I, I actually don't think that March eighth is a good date. I think that the Model A at the high school should start sooner. I don't, I am not in agreement with this motion. And I also don't think Model A works for elementary school if we're starting much later. So somebody else has to make the motion.
I move that we, um. You, um, use Model A with a new date of March the eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Yeah, I think that's, that's all right. I need a second.
Second.
So, um, if, um, Madam Chair, if we're in discussion, um, I would like that if we do this, that. Um, if we can. You know, have the principals, you know, I know that we can't say those, you know, the, those students that. Are kind of falling through the cracks that are not, um. Expected to come back because they don't meet any of the categories that we have now, but just may need some extra support at home. You know, um, maybe, um, some guidance or whatever. You know, is a, a way that the principals can send out a, a notice or something to parent said, if you are having trouble or whatever. And they may be doing this, this now, I'm not sure. You know, uh, a way that they can follow up and, and contact the principal or a school administrator to let them know.
But one, I don't understand because under what you have just moved, we're not doing. Model A until March eighth, which would allow at least the Parkinson's to return. Until March eighth. So like even doing what you're suggesting is not permitted by that motion that you just made. Until March eighth.
What I'm saying now is that. The students are currently doing, will start the virtual learning. At the beginning of the, the. When, when would virtual learning begin, um, for students? Like when we want to break in? When is that date?
Targeted, targeted students, you mean? Or I'm sorry, but you said virtual learning.
Yes.
In that.
Yes, well, the, the, yeah, they, they're back from break. So Gabby's not in the school now, so. So, so I'm saying, but the students that are now in virtual learning.
Yes, sir.
That some of those students, as Rosa mentioned, that they may be falling through the cracks, but they're not scheduled to, to come back in person at all. But, um, they may be falling through the cracks. They may need some, some guidance on, on how to connect to class. Or they may just be feel disconnected. Um, and that's what I want. And, and they may only need a call to say, this is how you do that. It may not mean them coming to school. It is, they just may need some guidance on how to do something. And so that's what I'm, want to make sure. If there's some small, low-hanging fruit type of things that we can take care of with the students. That I just wanted to make sure that that's done. With the virtual learning that's going on now.
Jennifer. I was gonna add to, I'm sorry, I apologize, Madam Chair.
No, no, um, I just was curious, Jennifer. I mean, that's basically what you're, you've been saying, correct? That.
Well, I, I don't know how to prioritize students. I'm not an educator.
Right.
So I feel like we have a lot of students virtual is not working for. Um, and our principals and teachers know who they are. Without disrupting virtual learning at the high school level. You can bring those students back in the morning and connect them to people, each other and to teachers. That is what Model A allows for. And that is up to a hundred to a hundred and fifty students a day, depending on your grade, right? That's what Dr. Iraziri presented as Model A, which I think would allow for. which I think would allow for not just ELL, not just special ed, not just children with reading issues, but also those students who you who need connection. So that's why I just feel like thinking outside the box is the most critical thing that we need to do right now. We need to reach student. This is the opportunity. We have at least two months, but probably longer if we're going to be really honest, to reach students. And how are we going to do that without disrupting what's working for some students in virtual learning?
But Jennifer, my question is, if this is for the high school students, you also have to go for the elementary school students. That's the foundation.
I don't know that you do, sir. I mean, we have the schedule.
As an educator.
I disagree.
You know, I I certainly would, but you have to have the balance. You can't do one and not do the other one. What about the elementary, the pre-K through two and the three and four years?
We can do something.
Third and fourth graders, I mean.
I just don't think.
You can't bring one back at the top and the elementary kids are left out. That's the foundation.
It is not.
That extends to me. It really doesn't.
We need those kids in high school to graduate.
Yes, that's true. I understand that as a counselor.
Many, many years.
But we also, we have to also remember those little ones. As well, if you're going to bring them back, you can bring the little ones back. So how do you balance both and do both?
Dr. Atkins has not presented us with anything that allowed the students to, most students to remain virtual and reach children who are targeted and who need that support at the elementary.
Can I ask a question? So if we we have a motion on the floor here, is there a way to allow for plus some flexibility in this and the decisions that could be made, not by the board, but you know, by the principals or by Dr. Atkins? If there are some targeted groups that, you know, we feel need somewhat of a different timetable and we're able to do it on a small scale? Can we have that kind of flexibility even if we, you know, if we approve a motion now with it with this March eighth date? Can we have both? Dr. Atkins, maybe that's a question to you.
I I need to give that some thought. And rather than answering that now, I really do need to pour to assemble the team to talk about what are all of the implications for having a fixed schedule and a flexible schedule at the same time? What are those implications for all of the other services that have to be coordinated with that?
I guess if if we can ask, then if you could do that, I think, I mean, obviously, we're all very concerned about about, you know, the students that need the targeted interventions, how we can do that and be least disruptive. I would like to ask, and is is that okay with you?
Yes, yes, it will. So let's make sure that we lay out what the parameters will have to be. We'll have to then identify specific teachers that will be coming in the building to meet face to face with the targeted group of students while we're saying that we're not bringing students back into the building.
But isn't that the same thing that you've considered?
Hold on.
Isn't that the same thing that you've considered for the February twenty-second day?
Well, the February twenty-second, we're bringing in cohorts of students who have indicated that they want to come back virtually. What I think I'm hearing the request is is not to bring in a co-grade level cohort of students, not to identify a grade level cohort to allow teams at the school to identify individual students to come into the building for face-to-face instruction and intervention. And it would be building-based decisions, teachers and administrators, which can make great decisions. They do know our students who need support and help, but they would be convening determining which teachers will be coming back in the building and determining which individual students will be coming back in the building, when those students would be coming back, the frequency of them coming back and the time that they will come back. And so that's what I mean. We we'd have to assemble the team to talk about what are the logistical implications of putting a plan like that in place? Which is different from the A model that we're recommending or the A model that we have discussed.
Lashandra.
So yeah, to to add on to what you were saying, the way that you at the previous meeting, we talked about how there are students who needed intervention. I believe specifically special education students, and they were coming in the building at different times. So I think what we're asking, or at least what I'm asking, is looking at that right now for kids most at risk by whatever metrics we measure it, you know, in each building with principals and teachers working together, and even some thinking outside of the box for kids in those learning centers where I I read on Twitter where there was a teacher who just went to one and visited her students, like little things like that, like that's what we're asking. What can we do right now before we're back in school for targeted groups that need intervention by the metrics that principals are using in the building? Can we do something or come up with some plan like that for targeted interventions and teachers that are willing to do it, that feel safe doing it?
I'm sure we can work towards a plan that looks like that.
Ms. Purrier, did you have a question?
I'm probably more confused than I was when we started, but I think Lashandra may have cleared it up for me between she and Dr. Atkins. The children that we all have concerns about, Lashandra has indicated, is there a way, Dr. Atkins, that we can target those children now in order that when when in order that when face-to-face starts, they're not more underwater than they are now? Is that what I'm hearing you say, Lashandra?
That's that they're not more underwater and just in terms of equity, because it's not just about the academic part, it's about.
Right. And Dr. Atkins is saying to answer your question, no, Dr. Atkins is saying to address your concern, there is a way that she can speak to people in the building, whether it's school counselors, teachers, administrators, whoever, to look at those particular children in order to deal with them at this point so that they are not more underwater than with the that they are not more underwater so that when we go back face-to-face, it's more, for lack of a better word, Lashandra, you know, even equal level, you know?
Yeah, that's that's what I'm saying. But I also just to complicate it, it's not just about the curriculum. The kids in the learning centers are there in masks. They're with kids of all different grades and ages. They have to wear headphones. They don't have the same connection, even if you're just at home by yourself, learning virtual. And, you know, just for equity, they're seeing, I've seen in my daughter's class and I asked how I can help. There I see kids in their cars still sometimes trying to get a signal or trying. So that's what I'm talking about, like helping where we can with curriculum and falling behind, but also just with equity to let them know that they're important and we haven't forgotten about them.
If we look at the option A, the preschool through K, the pre-K through six students, the estimated number of students that would come face-to-face in that at-risk group for grades three and four would be fifty-five to eighty-five students. In the five-sixth group, it's from estimated about fifty-five to eighty-five students would fall into that at-risk group. So that's the numbers that we would be looking at for those grade levels. And then we would have to consider what does that at-risk group look like preschool through second grade in order to cover all of those grades? And then the Buford and the high school would have to do the same. I believe the high school, I don't see their numbers on this chart that I'm looking at. Eric, how many students?
It was a hundred to a hundred and fifty.
It was a hundred to a hundred and fifty, wasn't it?
A hundred and fifty.
Right, right now, our our invite list is around three hundred. And we would reexamine that list at the end of this semester that's coming up too. So that would that would start to grow from there. That's a that's a kind of at-this-moment snapshot.
Per week? For three hundred a day? Okay, yeah, right.
That's three hu- that three hundred would be divided into two groups, right, Dr. Erezary?
Uh, four.
The four hundred would be divided into four groups or two groups?
At right, right now, we have three hundred at-risk, you know, students that we will be inviting into the building. Those are nine through twelve. So that would be divided, so that three hundred at this point would be divided by four, and those numbers would probably start to grow after the end of this semester.
Okay.
Dr. Erezary, are you the three hundred students each each cohort that you would bring in at a time would come in one day a week? Each group?
Yes, they would come in, yeah, they would come in so each.
Grade level.
Each grade level would come in on their own particular day with some exceptions for ESL and our WALK students that may come in a little more frequently, but those are lower numbers of students. But the majority of the students would be coming in by their cohort or their grade level on a specific day from nine to eleven.
Dr. Erezary, I really want to make this happen for your students, honestly. And I just I cannot, again, because of the fact that ninth and tenth graders barely know what school looks like, twelfth and eleventh graders and twelfth graders are really in at risk of not graduating. I just so and and because the plan does not disrupt virtual learning for anybody, it's just additional education targeted instruction for these three hundred students from nine to eleven. You still have your twelve-thirty to four instruction. I just, I don't understand why we can't make that happen for students and teachers who are willing to make that happen when we have kids doing sports. Just doesn't make any sense to me.
Dr. Erezary, do you feel like it, I mean, if, say, this were to happen in a couple of weeks? I mean, are you staffed and ready to to roll with that?
No, I mean, at this point, we're, you know, we're we're working on calling each individual family because, you know, our plan did change from the original proposal. And then from there, we would have to figure out in each grade level what, you know, where our students struggle, and we would have to ask the staff i- in this new scenario, who would be willing to come in? And, you know, there for for everything that we've mentioned today, we, you know, we have students that are struggling. But we also have a lot of anxiety out there with staff too. So I I would find a piecemeal something together. What, you know, I I don't know where we'd be. So this plan, what I'm saying is this plan would would depend on how many teachers would be willing to come in. And I don't know exactly at this point until we can come up with some dates and in a solid plan. You know, I don't know what that number is right, right at this moment. We would have to, you know, but it would have to rely on this, on on folks coming into the building.
Okay, I I just felt like it was important to ask you that so we could hear where where you're at with that. So thank you.
You're not ready to implement Model A on January seventeenth or nineteenth or whenever we were supposed to go back to school? That's really what I'm not asking a piecemeal approach. I'm asking for like Model A.
Yeah, we're currently in the process right now, you know, with our, our date was February first.
Oh, I bet, yeah.
That's been our target. So we're, you know, since last, you know, Thursday before break, we've been working on our student list. Counselors and everybody's are calling families to explain this new plan and trying to recruit those students that are targeted to come in. Our ESL team has worked out their plan and WALK has their plan. So we're just waiting. It it is moving ahead as, you know, a- as we've been planning for February first.
Okay, thank you.
Now, do you have the numbers for Buford? That they would have somewhere between seventy to eighty students per day? So their numbers relatively speaking are similar to the ones at at CHS.
So I would like to just kind of bring us back if we're ready to do that. There was a motion Mr. Wade I believe made.
Yes, it was essentially Model A with March the eighth and and I'm certainly open to any modification to that. The main purpose was to get you know, to get some action, get some movement.
Sure. And I appreciate that. And I think I if anybody else has some discussion on that, I just wanted to share. And I don't think I had had spoken directly to that. I, Dr. Atkins, I hear the importance and the need to kind of have a a target date so people can plan. But I I'm not comfortable. I feel like that is a little premature as well, as far as the eighth. You know, that we would be ready to go back. So I I don't know where we go from that unless we wanted to take a vote. If there's any further discussion about, you know, reconsideration of the eighth as a return.
Just sounds like we are really talking about two different issues here. And so if we are talking specifically about a return date, I think two to three weeks after we make a decision that we can return, you know, given the data, that's where we should go. We just don't have a goal line right now. But with respect to small cohorts of children going back to school or having these targeted interventions, that sounds like a different different thing. And maybe that plating them at this point is problematic.
It is a little, it's, I think we're sending mixed messages. And and, you know, I think it's, it is kind of getting a little bit confusing. And I don't know that the board can, you know, reasonably mandate that, you know, these targeted groups start coming in with teachers who we don't know. You know, we're we're at the peak of the surge. You know, the virus is the worst that it's ever been. And you know, we have no idea which teachers are going to feel like they can go back in the buildings with these groups of kids now. Maybe there are some, but I really don't know. And I I don't feel comfortable mandating that. I, you know, I wish that if we can just have some kind of language in there that allows for some, you know, some additional process to to, you know, really take a look at what's possible here. You know, that our our, the board's desire is to focus on these targeted groups of students and provide additional interventions for them. And as to how we do it and where we do it and who does it, you know, I don't think the board can make that decision. So I guess I feel that way. As far as the date goes, I I actually am comfortable putting a date out there of a date of March the eighth at this point. And I know it's possible that it may change, but I think it's, you know, it's two months from now. So I think things will be different, and I think the vaccine is a real factor, at least in my thinking.
Okay, any further discussion? And then I think we're going to call for a vote. Did I have a second? I'm sorry, did we have a second on that?
You did, Sherry seconded.
Okay, thank you. Missed what she said. Okay. Well, if no one else has any further discussion on that, Madam Clerk, could you call for a vote, please?
Okay, and just to clarify, yes, it was Mr. Wade had motioned and Dr. Craft seconded that.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, for the vote, I have Mr. Bryant.
This for March the eighth, correct?
For the March eighth, yes.
Yes.
It's Bryson Morseburger?
No.
Dr. Craft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever?
No.
Ms. Purrier? Ms. Perrier?
You're muted, Ms. Perrier?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Torres?
No.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ooh, that was a long one, where are we? Um, this is the wrong agenda, I'm looking at, sorry.
Literacy, literacy.
Makes you frozen.
Oh, no, you're frozen.
Am I frozen?
Oh, now you're not.
I'm sorry, I was like, wait, am I frozen or is everybody in school? Um, yes, so I believe we're, unless there was something else, um, that we, we missed with that nine point one, we are now at nine point two, which is a literacy update.
I thank you, Ms. Torres. Um, we have, um, Dr. Odie will introduce our literacy specialist, um, Steph Tadle, and to talk with you, give you an overview of our plan for literacy and where we are to date.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, Dr. Atkins, good evening again. Uh, tonight, Steph Tadle, our literacy coordinator, is here to share with you our literacy update. Ms. Tadle?
Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Atkins, tonight I'm going to update you on all things literacy. Uh, there are some slides, and maybe while, um, we get those pulled up, I'll do a rousing read-alout of Chicka Chicka Boom Boom. How about that? All right, um, and actually, we're going to slide. Thank you. Um, all right, well, I wanted to start with these four interconnected goals that drive our work from pre-K through fourth grade. And what's most important here that I want you to see is that they are all levers for equitable outcomes for every student. You can go to the next slide. And embedded in, um, our goals is an emphasis on bringing an awareness of the science of reading. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the science of reading. Um, I want to define what it is and what it isn't. It's a really hot term right now, if you were to Google it, you'd see all kinds of things. So I just want to make sure that we all have a common definition. So the science of reading is the body of research over the last fifty-plus years from several scientific disciplines about language development, how we learn to read, and which instructional practices are proven to be effective through that sound research. It tells us that systematic and explicit phonics instruction in the early grades is absolutely essential and non-negotiable, but not without high-quality language and meaning-based instruction. The science of reading is not a debatable philosophy, and it's also not a program that comes in a box. It is about applying what we know to be true about how children learn to read through a curriculum and instructional practices deemed effective through this research. So what you're looking at now is called the simple view, and it's a, it's called the simple view of reading. And it's a really good summary of what is actually not a simple process, it's actually a very complex process that requires a great deal of teacher knowledge to do really, really well. Um, as Louisa Moat says, um, teaching reading is rocket science. And this shows us that reading comprehension is actually the product of word recognition, can also call that decoding, um, and language comprehension, which includes vocabulary, background knowledge, and verbal reasoning. So we multiply rather than add because this is important. Strength in one area will never fully compensate for a weakness in the other. So for example, if I don't teach you how to decode words in a way that's evidence-based, you're going to have a really tough time getting through complex literature and text and science and social studies. And conversely, if I only teach you phonics and ignore vocabulary knowledge and critical thinking, you might be able to decode the words on a page, but you won't understand them. So you can go to the next slide. So the reason why we're talking about this is that our data fits a larger statewide and national pattern of a lack of reading progress across, across the last four years. So this slide is from the VDOE, and it shows in the overall gradual, very gradual downward trend of statewide SOL scores and reading across all, across all grades that are tested for SOLs in the last four years. We say, we see the same trend nationally in the NAEP reading scores in both fourth and eighth grade. So on the next slide, um, this is just an image of a flyer from the VDOE. The VDOE shared these seven strategies for improving literacy instruction. And the number one strategy is to enhance the science of reading for all learners. So we've been working on this in, in Charlottesville, uh, bringing an awareness of the science of reading and how it's evident in our curriculum and instruction here in Charlottesville. Um, and because of the COVID slide, this is more important than ever. So on the next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about where we are. So, um, I know you're all wondering, how has COVID impacted our achievement? We're still sort of trying to figure that out. And while we have some fall data, it's important to consider the limits of the data gathered remotely. And so we are thoughtful about which assessment data is going to be useful, valid, and worth the time we lose for instruction to get it. So school divisions were required by the VDOE to administer PALS this fall in grades pre-K through three. And PALS stands for the phonological awareness literacy screening. It's a series of tasks that are administered one-on-one. Um, our schools got super creative this fall about how to give PALS through Zoom on every pre-K through third grader. Um, and we worked very closely with the PALS office to understand, um, that our data collected in this non-standard way. And as a result, it's the data set that we have that is probably the most comprehensive and with a relatively stronger degree of validity. So in the next slide, I'm going to show you, um, the percentage of students in grades K through three whose PALS SUM score did not meet the benchmark as compared to the fall last year. So the blue is last year, the red is this year. And this is showing the percentage of students who did not meet the benchmark. So you see an increase in the number of students who did not meet the benchmark. That benchmark is a combination of individual tasks. So keep in mind that this data does not tell the whole story of a student's literacy achievement. But it is an indication of the initial impact of the COVID closure and the reduced time for literacy instruction and practice for our K-three students. It shows a consistent pattern from K through three that more students this year in each grade did not meet the fall benchmark. We did anticipate that this would be the case, and we are not alone. This is where, what it's looking like most places. Um, and on the next slide, I will talk about how we are responding. So first, we are implementing, um, our new curriculum framework in a very, very focused way. We have a team of amazing teachers, coaches, and reading specialists who have been working together to prioritize standards, strategies, and pacing and lesson resources. Second, um, we just began to create a long-term strategic plan for implementing and monitoring our curriculum framework. So COVID or not, this is a long-term strategy. Um, and third, we're working to provide sustained professional learning and coaching to teachers. This includes leveraging our existing processes and roles such as instructional coaches, reading specialists, and PLCs, um, as well as two new opportunities, letters training that we want to expand through third grade after this year, and a new division literacy course for pre-K through sixth grade teachers, both of which will bring awareness of the science of reading and how to apply that in instruction. And then on the next slide, um, I'll just quickly update you about, um, EBL because we are using the EBL program this year to help mitigate the COVID slide. So for direct support to students, we are doing one-to-one virtual tutoring for identified students in elementary. And we made Lexia Core Five available to all pre-K through fourth graders for differentiated practice and instruction and foundational skills. So Lexia Core Five is a, is a computer program, it's not a magic bullet, but it is something, um, that families can trust in which their, their children can get practice. And for building teacher capacity, EBL is also funding the thirty-nine teacher specialists, coaches, and administrators in K and one to complete the letters training. Um, but it's not all about pre-K through five. So on the next slide, I have a little six through eight update, um, about what's happening at the secondary level. Teachers are using their new curriculum. Uh, Buford is benefiting from a three-part professional learning series with Dr. Sarah Lupo from JMU about how to scaffold complex texts for every student to further unleveling and equity work. And we're doing some of that same PL in, um, sixth grade as well. And on the next slide, um, in grades nine through twelve, um, the, uh, the English department has, uh, come together to support our ninth grade class as the first class to begin the high school writing portfolio that will take the place of the end-of-course writing SOL, which is normally given in the ten, in tenth grade. This will be the last year of that SOL as we transition to the writing portfolio performance assessment, which is, um, going to be better connected to curriculum and show growth over the years and have students be involved in their portfolio. And a very exciting collaboration has been in the works between the English and History Departments to align content across those two departments, specifically in ninth and tenth grades. And the purpose is to deepen learning for students and give them more opportunities to learn about the world and apply their skills across classes. Teachers are working very, very hard and thoughtfully on this effort to integrate their standards and provide a meaningful learning experience for students. And then I just wanted to leave you, um, on the last slide, with our mission and goals for literacy in English Language Arts. I was told to be short and sweet, so that's what I'm doing here. Um, and I hope that you see that the work we are doing, teaching in reading, writing, um, and communication to be integral to the division's commitment to educational equity. I want to thank you for your time tonight, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Tadle. As always, I enjoy hearing your updates. Do any of the board members have questions?
Um, I just had a, um, a question or comment, and, um, you, you mentioned some term that some professor at JMU, um, is using. And if you could explain that a little bit more, really, you know, learn a lot about different methods and processes through when, um, in reading and comprehending. So I can't remember the term that you used because you went through it pretty quick. Do you recall what you said about that?
Was it complex text or scaffolding complex?
Yes, scaffolding, yes.
Sorry about that. Yeah, no, thank you for asking, and I apologize, uh, tried to de-jargon this. Um, so basically, that means, um, I don't want to say grade-level text because there's, uh, you know, that can mean a lot of different things. But for a long time now, um, you know, we've had an emphasis on leveled text, putting kids in a text that's at their level. And if you're, if you're not yet reading, let's say you're an eighth grader and you're not yet tip normally reading eighth-grade level stuff, you're going to get put in text that's easier for a long time. And then there's never an on-ramp for you to, to experience challenging texts. And so when we say complex text, we're generally talking about grade-level text that is complex because, um, it's authentic text, it may, it may have sophisticated structure or language, a lot of, uh, you know, figurative language and vocabulary, and it's meaty, and it gives teachers an opportunity to really teach language and, um, and, and text, and, and actually teach, teach reading. So it's about, um, and when we say scaffolding, scaffolding is kind of a fancy word for teaching or instructing. But the idea, and this is, and, and I'm glad you asked because this is a real equity lever, is, um, if we don't give every student access to grade-level complex text, every student does not have the opportunity to make, to, to achieve at those levels. And so, um, ensuring that every student has that access and that, um, every teacher knows how to teach that text for every student, you know, that, that, that's a really important lever for equity to make sure all those kids are, are get, are getting the access. So I guess, long story short, um, you know, I, you may have students who aren't ready to read, um, an entire text by themselves, but that doesn't mean that they shouldn't have access to some part of it or some, some way to interact with it because they're going to learn a lot of background knowledge and vocabulary and be challenged by it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Dr. Kraft?
Yeah, um, thank you, thank you for this presentation. It sounds like there's a lot of really good stuff going on. And, uh, oh, I don't know, this is my question. So, um, how do we, what, I mean, what is your feeling about, like, what do we need to do to make up the lost ground, uh, from the pandemic? Do we do, I mean, just what, what are your thoughts about how we do that with literacy?
Yeah, well, I will say, I mean, one thing that we're doing right now is that I think that our teachers are teaching like their hair is on fire. Um, and they're continuing to move ahead with grade-level content, and that's really, that's really key. So that's one thing, is, um, is, is, is to sort of not, not, not go back and just try to remediate, remediate, remediate. So one thing we know from Hurricane Katrina, um, is that, that's sort of the only example we have in this country of like a massive amount of people who had a lot of interrupted schooling. Um, and one of the mistakes they realized they made was, um, they went back and did a ton of remediation and made it very like low-level skill, and they know that that didn't work. And so, um, some of the guidance that we're getting from the state and also from a national organization called Student Achievement Partners is, um, that, uh, we have to think about, um, how we bring children into grade-level content, whether it's first grade learning how to read or eleventh grade writing really sophisticated essays. Not, is, so, is, is thinking about like, how do we bring them into that content? How do we support them to do that grade-level work, not weather? And so, um, so one of the things we're doing is really keeping, uh, keeping tight on our pacing. Um, we have these in K-five and in six-eight, um, as of last year, the two programs that were purchased, the timing could not have been more, more perfect because, um, you know, while teachers are having to learn how to implement this whole new program, they actually have a program, they have a curriculum that is both digital and print, which is really critical right now. So, so that's one thing, is to sort of, uh, try not to go backwards. We also, um, I think the, the, um, for the, for younger kids, again, Lexia is not a magic bullet, it is not a panacea, but that is practice that kids can do at home. And through the summer, families are going to have access to that all summer long, um, to continue to have differentiated practice and practice for mastery, which is really important. Um, I think the other thing is just finding more ways to build in more time for literacy instruction in the time that we have with kids right now. And I know principals are really thinking about that, um, and thinking about how can we, how can we be creative with the time that we have so that we have, like I said, more time for instruction? Um, and then I know, you know, several of us are starting to think about sort of next year. So what do we do with our pacing for next year in order to continue to provide grade-level content for every child? But at the same time, try to build in some of that recovery that we're for sure going to have to do.
Thank you, great answer.
Anybody else?
I just really want to give a shout-out to the Lexia. Uh, it's like really the only way we can do Fridays, um, and that my kids get good reading time. I do think, obviously, I emphasize, we emphasize, you need to be doing your Lexia. Um, so it might be helpful to kind of just note that to parents, like, hey, I mean, maybe teachers are doing it individually, but like, I don't know how to get parents more engaged in literacy instruction because myself, I'm terrible at it. But maybe there is some encouragement we could offer for parents about Lexia, especially that summer, but I think that's really helpful. Sarah says hello.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Um, can we at some point, if you could email it to us, or at some point, can we see a breakdown of the PALS, um, testing numbers by ethnicity as well?
I, uh, broadly, yes, I can't share names of students with you.
Of course, of course.
Yes.
Okay. And then just another just very maybe random seeming question. But if you're a grade level behind, um, with reading, and you got all the interventions and we did everything good, how, everything perfect or whatever, what's the timeline for catching you up? Like, how long does it generally take to catch someone up if they're behind a grade level in reading or, you know, more than a grade level? But I guess, how, how long does it take to make up that gap if we do everything we're supposed to do?
That is a really hard question. Um, I think what we're trying to focus- I think what we're trying to focus on is how do we prevent the need for intervention right now as best as we can? Like, how do we really strengthen what we're doing and what we call tier one? It's just like the instruction that everybody gets during the day. How do we focus? Really, really focus on our tier one instruction, our planning, our professional development, our ti- time for teachers to do that planning together so that they can do the best tier one instruction possible, so that we reduce the need for intervention. So that's the first thing. I know that's not totally answering your question. But but that is the single most important thing is putting putting as many eggs as we can into the tier one basket. And one thing we know about with reading, and this is something the science of reading tells us, is that even when everything is perfect, even when your tier one is perfect and the tier you've got tiered interventions and you've got everything is like cooking and great. There is always going to be a percentage of of children who have difficulty reading, and there will always be a small percentage of children who have a significant difficulty reading, and that's because reading is not a natural human activity. So children learn how to speak without any instruction, right? Reading doesn't work that way because it hasn't been around long enough for the human brain to evolve for it to be a natural process. And learning to read in English is very tricky. And so there's always going to be a need for intervention, and that's part of the RTI, the the thinking behind RTI response to intervention is that there there will always be kids who need extra support. And so to answer your question in a very non-answery way, it just depends on so many factors, right? It depends on that individual child. It depends on what what are the issues? You know, if, like you said, everything is perfect and great and everything is working at every single level, then it shouldn't take it shouldn't take years and years and years. So if it's taking years and years and years, it's either because we have a problem with our tier one instruction. Or for some kids, they're just, it's always going to be a struggle. And you know, we we live in the in reality, and so in reality, we are not yet to the point where we can say that everything is perfect. So we have to look at our own instruction first and our own processes.
Thank you. I appreciate the answer. I just work in worst case scenarios. So I try to go as, you know, but I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Yeah. I wish I had a better answer for you.
It was perfect.
Anybody else?
Well, I know Bianca is ready to talk, so.
All right. Well, thank you so much for for all that you do in your presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right. And next we are at nine point three, student and family family engagement, early connections update, please.
Ms. Torres, many of our community members saw several uh, community events, the response to essential needs, extravaganza that happened in our community, and we are so pleased to have with us Bianca Johnson, who is going to talk about student and family services and all of the great work that she has done with her team. So Dr. Odie, I'm going to go ahead and pull up Bianca. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Introduction made. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Atkins, and everyone else attending today's school board meeting. Thank you for having me. Tonight, I'll present the family engagement update from the last time that we presented a year ago until now. And we can go to the next slide. And so our updates are going to be from January to March of pre-COVID, March and COVID to the end of the school year and July of 2020 to now. And first, I'd like to start with a quote from the National Education Association, and it reads, "Family engagement is about every adult in a child's life, working together to help the child reach their full potential. Just like a space launch needs engineers, mathematicians, and physicists to work side by side to send astronauts to space. Families, schools, and communities need to form partnerships for all children to have the opportunity to succeed. And with that being said, family engagement is a shared responsibility between all of us to make decisions in the best interest of our student population. It's a it's a culturally responsive approach to relationship building. It's a plan for connecting with the child's key family members, and this looks like different things depending on our role within the division." Let me go to the next slide. In January, the family engagement team continued with our planned activities. We can go back one, please. In January, the family engagement team continued with our planned family activities, such as cooking classes. This was made possible through our partnership with Aetna, who provided interactive lessons while we tied in cooking, math, and give out resources. Throughout both January and February, my colleague and I continued to support school-based events such as school at morning meetings, family nights, and just stopping by in classrooms to say hello and spend some time with the students. Next slide. We attended the Family Engagement Professional Development with Virginia Tier Systems of Support and the Family Engagement Academy through the School University Research Network, or CERN, at William &amp; Mary. At the BTSS conference, my colleague and I presented a year review of our work in family engagement. We also presented during the professional development day to division staff on the topic strengthening family engagement. And we're also working to plan the next parent university. And as you guys know, that's a series of workshops for families to learn about best practices to support content learning at home, as well as get to know workshops about topics like the growth mindset. March Parent University was in partnership with the Art Connections Art Show, and this is when COVID hit. Parent University was canceled. Our school shut down for a little while, and this has ultimately shifted a lot of our current practices, events, and even how we interact. It's limited our normal in-person gatherings such as bus stop meet and greets as well as community workshops. Let me go to the next slide. During the remaining school year in COVID, we coordinated supplies drive for families to have what they needed during virtual instruction. And we also kept in contact with community centers and other partners to do donation drop offs. The electronic version of the reading, math, and science connection flyers were still distributed virtually for our elementary families. We also kept up with our professional development with a book study on the Culture of Love by Lou Vell Brown. And before we knew it, the school year was over and we were planning for our next year. And during our transition from one year to the next, we went from a team of two to one. Let me go to the next slide. And the summer was dedicated to planning, making community connections, and meetings for the upcoming school year. Denise Johnson, the supervisor of Equity and Inclusion, and I worked on a return to learn videos for families, detailing what to expect for the upcoming school year, how to become involved in contact information. I also presented virtually on an introduction to family engagement within CTSS for the new division staff. The partnership with the Ready Kids Ready Steps Program has continued in the virtual world from in-person mini workshops to on-demand workshop videos for the families that they serve. Some of the topics have included schedules and routines and reasons why parents and families are important to their child's education. In October, I presented the six types of parent involvement from the book School, Family, and Community Partnerships by Joyce Epstein at one of the Equity Lunch and Learn Series. City of Promise and I also communicate frequently to support the families in their neighborhood. And I've also been available to support elementary schools with advanced tiered family engagement conversations regarding engagement and attendance as needed. Let me go to the next slide. Um, and now I'd like to share a short video about the response to essential needs drive-through that I've coordinated this year. It'll give you some insight on the process and collective work that we've done to get the RIN extravaganza. After meeting with Dr. Atkins early on in the school year.
Sorry, I got an error that said the video won't play, so let me restart or refresh this.
No problem.
I think that Bianca could talk about the greatness of those events if the video is not going to play.
Um, I have it up and ready. If I can share my screen, I'm happy to play it.
Give me one second and I'll promote you there to be able to share. Okay, try now. See if that works for you.
Our volunteers all came together to bag, distribute, and receive contact information for those requesting additional services. From this first RIN, we observed that the need for basic but essential items was much higher than we anticipated. Because this need was so great, plans for another RIN drive-through started immediately. Jody Murphy facilitated a connection with the Chris Long Foundation for a meeting. Through this meeting, the Chris Long Foundation graciously agreed to fully fund the next response to essential needs drive-through. For this drive-through, division staff and volunteers provided information about community resources and winter break activities calendar, full-sized hygiene items, coats, books, and food. We partnered again with the United We Have Greater Charlottesville, Sumunye, PTOs, as well as new partners customing a donation group on Instagram and Cultivate Charlottesville. On December 12th at CHS, over 130 cars drove through to receive around 300 cloth masks, both adult and child size, over 450 hygiene bags, and 500-plus coats for our CCS families, as well as the items mentioned earlier. To date, we've received over $27,000 in donations to meet this need for our families. These donations have provided 700 hygiene bags, 500-plus coats, hundreds of books, food, and information for our families that needed the most. None of these things are possible without the family, school, and community partnerships that family engagement speaks about. We are planning for one more response to essential needs in the spring, in which an organization has already expressed a desire to purchase some of our supplies. All right, thank you.
I think there was more to your presentation. Is that correct, Bianca?
Uh, yes, if we get to share the the presentation again.
Wrong one, Leslie, the student and family engagement? Yes.
All right, next slide, please. I've also worked with other division staff to provide extra support in getting supplies to students and families, home visits, and survey canvassing in our receivable communities specifically for the intent to return surveys. The family engagement team is still a part of the Family Engagement Academy through CERN, and I also joined the District Leaders Network of Family and Community Engagement through the Institute for Educational Leadership in Washington, DC. And this network networks those in similar roles as me to meet, collaborate, and create family and community engagement strategies at the division level. For winter break, another winter break activities calendar was created with different activities that families can listen to or work on together while they're at home. This is also another opportunity to display some of our day of play videos from the weekend of December 4th. Next slide. And in this moment, the next parent university is being finalized. The name's been changed to Family University of Wheat, as we've seen that family members other than parents are also doing their part to continue learning for our students. Timing has been a challenge as we've been figuring out the safest way to continue learning going forward. And I know that families have a lot on their plates, and I want to make sure that Family University will be at a time that's accessible for them. The format will, of course, be virtual with one workshop weekly for about four to six weeks. Once topics, presenters, and days are finalized, information will be shared with the public. Next slide. And to wrap up, I'd like to thank these folks and organizations that I've worked closely with to make this year's Division Family Engagement support possible thus far. Family engagement looks like practicing communication that's responsive to families' needs. It's hosting collaborative activities with families in mind. It's offering community resources and family support. And all of these things benefit youth development, create systems of trust, and provides new experiences. And going forward, my hope is that as a division, we'll all continue to work together to do our part to maintain the family, school, and community partnerships that family engagement has modeled. No matter how big or how small our role is, it truly does take a village to support every learner, every day, everyone. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bianca. Beautiful presentation.
Very much so. Thank you so much. I mean, what a wonderful way to to truly show how our community has come together.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for her before we move on? All right. Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item. Nine point four, update on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also want to say thanks to Scott Tato. Great presentation. Really enjoyed it. Um, and now we have our diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator, Denise Johnson. She has been working in the community, in our schools. She has done an amazing job pulling together efforts around equity and keeping equity at the forefront of our decision-making. So Denise.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board, and Dr. Atkins. Thanks so much for having me this evening. I want to take a moment to thank you for your ongoing support and affirmation of our equity work. As a school system and as a community, we all have a role to play in moving equity forward. Thank you for your ongoing commitment to our staff and our students. Next slide, please. Please note that this presentation does not include all the equity work that is currently happening on a school-based or content-based level. This is a quick update. As a division, we are all working to use equity as the foundation of our work. So other staff may present at a different time to go into detail about specific areas, but it is all interconnected. Before I update you on our current equity work, Beth will take a moment to update you on past work.
Thank you, Denise. I I just want to bring some history to our conversation today, and I'm not going to go into detail because I know that you all have actually been part of this process to make these changes possible. I'm not going to read the slides, and I don't offer them in a congratulatory spirit, although there are points to celebrate. I present these slides because it's important for us to document what has been in place, in part because change does not typically bear immediate fruit. New initiatives may take a while to have impact. In that sense, I think documenting our history is important to understanding our present and our next steps. If you would like to see details about these or any other initiatives, I encourage you to visit charlottesvilleschools.org/equity. It's pretty built out for previous years, and Denise and I have been working on building it out for this coming year.
Thanks, Beth. All of these historic slides are available on the presentation, so you're welcome to deep dive into them as you see fit. Next slide, please, Leslie. Since adding community partnerships to my duties, I have worked with several of our community partners to push forward initiatives that will support our students and staff. Among these are the creation of the Support Seville Education Equity Website, Freedom School, and our upcoming mentoring program in partnership with UVA. As a division, we have also continued our equity-centered learning opportunities. We have posted a series of Lunch and Learns. Next slide, please. We have posted a series of Lunch and Learns on topics such as asset-based thinking, mapping Seville, and LGBTQ plus basics. All of our topics were aligned with our four key focus areas. And I want to say a huge thank you to all of our presenters for sharing some amazing information with our staff. Next slide. All of our equity councils are currently working within their schools. This year's focus is on our foundational knowledge and everyone's understanding of their role in our journey towards equity, while deep diving into an equity topic of their school's choosing. Next slide, please. Our division-level equity committee will be focused on creating our inclusive excellence framework and data dashboard. These tools will map out our equity goals and create an infrastructure for equity into the upcoming
These tools will map out our equity goals and create an infrastructure for equity into the upcoming years. Our work will continue throughout the semester. We have identified candidates for our new engagement support assistant positions. We will soon be rolling out our Adopt a C H S Senior Initiative, and our H R and P E departments have received training on supporting our LGBTQ+ community. We will have ongoing learning opportunities for staff and community conversations, where we will continue to learn and receive feedback. I will also be working with our professional learning coordinator to create our anti-bias professional learning and training calendar. In addition, we will have community workshops in partnership with our P T Os. We will also be hosting a series of internal conversations in conjunction with U V A's speaker series, which includes Dr. Kendy, who is a renowned author of How to Be an Anti-Racist and Stand. As you know, our equity work is a continued journey. These challenging times have shown even more clearly how important this work is, both as we respond to the immediate needs and as we proactively work to assure that every learner has the support they need to develop their full academic and social potential. Everyone's input is important as we move forward. We must continue to support the, we must continue to support and be the village of support for our students. Please continue to participate and find and communicate all of your ideas, it's so important. You can find my contact information and all updates on the Charlottesville City Schools website under our Equity tab. Thank you again for your time this evening.
Ms. Johnson, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you Ms. Johnson. Board, any quick questions or comments?
I have a question Ms. Torres regarding the engagement support assistance, tell me more about those, did we, where are those, tell me more about those.
Dr. Atkins, did you want me to answer, or did you want to take that?
Oh, Ms. Johnson, please do, you are Beth Chalk, thank you.
Okay, we, uh, wanted to have a extra system of support, uh, for our, uh, students that were, may need some extra, um, attention or support during virtual, virtual learning and being engaged in virtual learning. So we thought it would be helpful to hire some assistants to actively engage our disengaged students. And so C H S has, uh, made an offer to hire two engagement support assistants. Buford will have two, and Walker will currently have one, although they're making an effort to have another. And so ideally, every school will use their engagement support assistance in their own way to, um, benefit their school, but the foundation is to actively engage our disengaged students.
And each one of those schools, they've identified specific students that could best benefit from, um, the engagement. So we're looking forward to, and some of it has already started, looking forward to doing more of that individualized engagement.
And that seems extremely relevant to the conversation we just had, so I'm, I'm kind of surprised to be learning about this at this moment. I'm glad to hear it, I think obviously elementary schools need it as well, is how, where did this funding come from, how are we, what method, how was this decided on? This is where it would be in all of this stuff.
Well, we know our, our high school, middle school, and, and upper elementary school have students who struggle with engagement. Um, and they struggle, not that our elementary students do not, but because of the age level of Walker Buford and the high school students, they are much more independent and make decisions independent sometimes of their parents. So we know that it's important that we connect them to, um, community members, mentors, and people that can encourage them, uh, to continue to stay engaged with learning, to stay engaged with, uh, the virtual process, and to actually achieve at the levels that we know that they can. So we've used some intervention dollars, uh, to help some, uh, cares dollars to help us put these positions in place and to respond to the needs of the students. Denise, did you need to add anything to that?
No, they are active, um, participants in our family engagement teams, and so they'll be, they'll be working as a unit with the engagement teams at every school.
Will they be doing any delivery of instruction? Or they just like, or will they, I mean, I know a lot of, I don't, I mean, I'm sure they're not, but like, will they sit with a child and say like, what do you need, I mean, I don't, again, I think this would have been very helpful in the previous discussion, so I'm, this is why I'm like, I have some questions.
Yeah, the goal is to reach out and connect with every student individually and see what the barrier is. And so for some, they may need internet, internet access, and so we're working to get that provided. For some, they need more, they may need more structured space, and so we'll work to create that. Um, so we're working with the individual students to figure out what the barrier may be, and then, uh, the engagement support assistant will, um, be the liaison for part of that communication and help the school team to provide what they need.
Some of our students may just need, uh, someone to listen and to talk, and to share what's happening with them, to share their feelings, uh, to be encouraged to follow through on, on, uh, school assignments, to actually help them with the communication between, uh, the student and the teacher. So it really comes down to the individual student and what they need.
And thank you for pointing it out, Dr. Atkins, because the core of their work will be to build a relationship, and we know that we need that relationship in order to re-engage them in, in learning.
The students who are working with this team may also receive, um, uh, tutorial services, intervention services. They can take advantage of any of the other services that we have available in our school division.
And are these positions, I mean, long-term, or just for this, this year?
Just to meet the need that we have currently. And then we will assess and determine what we do ongoing, but they will put in place to respond to the needs that we have currently.
I'm, I'm wondering if the, the series of talks, um, at U V A, is that something that could be made available to any board members who would like to participate? Cause some of us could benefit from that.
Absolutely, I believe U V A's speaking series will be public, um, but anything that they do, I'll make sure you get the information for.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you Ms. Johnson. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, thank you Beth. Ms. Chalk.
Beth, thank you. All right, next item, if we may move on, is 9.5, um, and I believe that is the 2021-2022 Budget Development Update.
Ms. Kim Powell, thank you.
Yes. Good evening, um, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and Dr. Atkins. I hope you can hear me okay, my microphone has had some problems in meetings earlier today. Um, this is a brief update because the only new information since our work session, uh, in December was the, uh, release of the governor's budget and, um, our analysis of, of that, and Ms. Thacker, you can advance the next slide. And there are really, uh, only two items of, of significant note, um, in our analysis of the governor's proposed budget. One is the, his proposal does include funding, um, to go towards a 2% bonus for SOQ-funded instructional positions and support personnel. Uh, that would be effective, uh, funding that would be, uh, in effect on July 1st. However, um, the key terms here are the SOQ-funded positions. In every school district in the Commonwealth, the role goes beyond the SOQ as far as staffing their, um, their schools, and certainly Charlottesville is one small exception to that. Um, there are other factors that also make this amount of money that's actually associated with, with this bonus not, um, not that large. It's, uh, about 110,000, which doesn't really cover the cost of a 2% bonus, but it is something, and that it could become, instead of a bonus, there was some talk at some point about it being funding for a bonus or a raise, or they would make it specifically for a raise, but, um, you know, the process in which we will determine ultimately what's attached to that funding. The bigger and most significant piece of the governor's budget proposal is the no-loss funding, which is also known as full harmless funding, and this is to hold all divisions in the Commonwealth harmless from the enrollment loss, which would have a significant impact on our state revenue. But because, and as well as for all of the, um, school districts in the Commonwealth, so, um, that is the really significant thing that we all need to look for that to stay in there as the budget works its way through the House and Senate, because that is, that's very important for us. At this time, our state funding will be essentially level for next year, thanks to that no-loss provision staying in there. So Ms. Thacker, you're gonna go next slide, get the last slide please, thank you. So, um, this is just a quick reminder about the key, uh, dates we have ahead of us. Not this Saturday, but the following Saturday is our budget work session, that Saturday budget work session where we, um, start to provide more details about anticipated budget changes and so forth. And then another significant date in January will be our joint work session with the, with City Council, that's on January the 28th. I won't read these other dates to you all, but, um, you know, we're in that time now, this is the heavy lift in the budget process. I'm happy to take questions, Renee Hoover's on as well, and she's happy, either one of us is happy to entertain your questions if you have any at this time.
Thank you Kim, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? I know we're gonna be talking a lot about this in the next couple of weeks. All right, thank you ma'am, appreciate it. Um, and then our next item is 9.6, Locally Awarded Verified Credits Review Panel.
Uh, Ms. Torres, the State Department of Education gives, uh, uh, school divisions and school boards the flexibility to offer locally verified credits, uh, for their students, and, uh, it is, it does require a review panel at our high schools. So, uh, Dr. King will present to you tonight that, that review panel, and, um, ask for you to take action on that to approve that panel.
Thank you Dr. Atkins. Um, while Ms. Thacker is preparing to share the slides, I, as Dr. Atkins said, um, I'm presenting information on the locally awarded verified credit review panel appointments. And just to give a little background before I, um, share what the flexibility waiver provides, one part of meeting graduation requirements is with verified credits. And students earn a verified credit by successfully completing the requirements for a high school course and achieving a passing score on the S O L, which would be between 400 and 600. Um, yep, that's the perfect slide Ms. Thacker, thank you. Currently, our students, um, have opportunities to earn verified credits in, um, starting in the eighth grade if they're enrolled in, um, Algebra I or Geometry, because those are high school classes. If ninth grade math, if they didn't take it in eighth, um, eighth grade, uh, or, or seventh, science as well as history, and then 11th grade, they have the opportunity to earn a verified credit, um, with reading. Next slide please. Recently, um, State Board of Education revised the emergency guidelines to remove barriers to earning a verified credit for students to who continue to be impacted by our ongoing pandemic conditions, um, and that's for immediate, um, implementation. And as Dr. Atkins, as well as myself, next slide, has referred to, um, local, uh, verified credits, and Dr. Atkins referred to us already having local, um, awarded verified credits, but the, um, guideline that has been updated due to the pandemic, we now have some flexibility guidelines. So this chart shows you what the changes are, um, between the two. The current guideline for locally awarded verified credit has, um, the students must pass the class, must attempt an S O L in, in one of the subjects, reading, math, science, or history, and score a 375 to 399. There are caps on the number of locally awarded verified credits that a student can receive, and there's also, um, they must demonstrate mastery of the curriculum, and that would be determined by the local review panel. With the flexibility guidelines, um, it still continues to have, the student must pass the class. They do have to attempt the S O L, but that attempt is in reading, math, and science, but they do not have to make the, um, to attempt the S O L in history. In Steph Tadle's presentation, uh, she just very briefly, quickly, mentioned, um, performance assessment task in history. Uh, our students have already started taking those this school year, so, um, our high school students will not take the history S O L, um, due to other flexibilities that have occurred. Then also, the range of scores that students, um, can achieve, instead of 375, is now 350 to 399. There is, there are no caps on the number of locally awarded verified credits a student can, um, receive, but they still have to demonstrate mastery, which will be reviewed by, um, the local review panel. Next slide please. So we do have our, um, school board policy, I K F A, on locally awarded verified credits. Um, has the school board appoint review panels of at least three educators. Those proposed lists of appointments for, um, Buford Charlottesville High School and Lugo McGinnis, um, Academy has been presented, um, to you. I don't know Ms. Thacker if you want to post that, um, or share that display. And what the, just so that you know, what the verification process includes for the panels, they will review evidence. When I say what does it mean to demonstrate mastery, they're going to review the evidence of their students' masteries by looking at their achievement of standards and competence and objectives. But they're also going to determine, um, the information to be considered as evidence. Is, will it be results of classroom assignments or division-wide exams? They're gonna consider whether a locally awarded verified credit is given to all the students in a particular course, or are they gonna do it by, um, student-by-student basis, and how that will occur. And then lastly, ultimately, what they're going to do is actually award the verified credit, deny it, or provide additional opportunities for the student, um, to earn the, um, locally verified credit. So at this time, I will pause, um, for questions, and when we're done, I would, um, ask that the board, as Dr. Atkins said, take action on this item.
Any questions from board members? I'm not seeing anything, thank you Dr. King.
Thank you.
So we do need a motion, please.
What are, could you clarify, what are we asked, being asked to approve?
Yes, the appointments of, um, s- staff members at each, um, school location who will participate in the verification process for students who meet the flexibility criteria that's been, um, offered by the state due to the pandemic.
Okay, so I will move that we approve the, um, appointment of, of these, um, reviewers, I guess, this review panel.
Review panel, yes.
A second.
Can we see the review panel again, and can you explain why all of the guidance counselors are on there and not just like?
It's important because they award.
All of them?
They do that on their caseload.
Mr. Bryant.
They award their local verified credits for students on their caseloads.
Okay, so are they then only gonna be on those that, um, are with their students?
Correct.
Okay, so that's why they're, okay.
And I'll raise second to motion.
Any other questions?
Okay, but there's only one in, I guess, is the eighth grade? I'm just trying to understand. There's only one in, is that just because he's the eighth grade counselor? That's why, and they only are the ones who get locally awarded verified credits?
Because they only get it in math.
Co- correct, at, at the, at the middle.
They don't have a whole lot of students, other than ones taking math.
And it's not required for, um, Buford has to, for both to be on. Um, the only requirement is that you at least have three, um, educators, and each school did a, um, educator from the different content areas.
Thank you all.
Any other questions? So I believe I have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, if we could. If there's no further discussion, if we could get, um, a vote, please, Madam Chair.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Yes.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. McKeever? Ms. Purrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. King.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. King.
All right. Moving right along, we are at, um, ten point O, which is board response to written reports. Any, any comments? I'm drawing a blank on this one.
Yeah. No question, no comments from me.
All right. And we just keep on rolling? Is that correct?
No comments.
All right. Thank you. Um, and now we are at, um, eleven point zero, which is our second opportunity for comments from members of the community. Um, again, I will have, um, Mr. Como notify us if, if he sees, um, hands raised in the Zoom or anybody signing up in the chat and a reminder that, um, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, please, and identify yourself, um, your address and name as you speak.
And Madam Chair, we have, um, Beth Ike with her hand raised, and at this time, she's able to unmute and, um, uh, present and speak.
Thank you. Um, I am Beth Ike. I live at eight oh two St. Clair Avenue. Um, I want to echo Ms. McKeever and Ms. Bryson Morseburger's comments earlier about our, uh, COVID return, or return from COVID plans and the stress of it all, the stress on staff and the stress on families. Um, we had a parent conversation last night and the sort of ping ponginess of every two weeks reconsidering a plan was certainly something that came up as frustrating and difficult to manage the expectations of our kids, but also difficult on ourselves and I'm sure difficult on staff. I guess I'm wondering why we are not doing nine at a time, like we talked about it in the fall. My understanding was in the beginning of the school year that we would look at each quarter individually. That seems reasonable and I, um, I'm curious why we're not doing that. I also don't understand why Model A keeps, um, grades, I still don't understand. This, this meeting, I will say, was easier to follow than the last one. But I still don't understand why Model A keeps grades three to six home. Ms. Purrier had suggested that there was a pedagogical reason for the dates that, to me, had seemed pretty arbitrary. I'm wondering what the pedagogical reasons are for keeping three to six back. I applaud Ms. Bryson Morseburger's ideas about getting the at-risk, maybe not just her, but getting at-risk kids in. And Ms. McKeever's creative thinking about how to handle the nine to twelve kids. And in general, the idea that we might consider an alternative to Model A as it was presented. Because as time moves on and different things, um, make themselves known and goalposts change, I feel like we need to continue to have creative thinking. I would hope that the time that we now have, um, that with the time we have, that the administration would take the time to have some creative thinking and hopefully find a way to get grades three to six back to the school whenever we will return. I can't imagine that it would be March eighth, I think. Um, the conversation we had earlier and what we know about rates and where we are and where an expected, um, height of things is going to come feels unlikely that we would go back before the spring. Um, so I hope that you guys can just consider to think about how, what return looks like and is it, should it be the same thing that you thought it should be in January if it, we're not actually going back till April? Lastly, I wanted to say about vaccines, I didn't hear anything, and I haven't honestly researched this a lot about vaccines for children, but while you guys were on the phone, I did look. It looks like Moderna has only just started testing vaccines for twelve to seventeen-year-olds. And I know we're talking primarily about vacci- vaccinating staff. Um, but I didn't hear any conversation about vaccination for children and wondered if that was something the COVID committee had talked about at all and how that plays into safety of return. Um, thank you guys so much for everything. I really appreciate everyone's effort, um, especially our new Madam Chair. Thank you for taking the job.
Thank you, Ms. Ike. Anybody else, Mr. Como?
I don't see any hands at this time. Or any comments in the chat box?
I normally would not make a response, but I did just wanna pass on regarding vaccinations for, for children. And maybe Dr. Baptist has some information, but, uh, everything I've read and heard, um, is that nobody feels like those would be even ready to begin to roll out. At the earliest, it would be fall. So I think, um, there's just not enough data and research for kids at this point.
I've seen in the Virginia numbers where, um, children ten through nineteen have been vaccinated, but I don't know much of the research about it, and I'm assuming they were mainly in the eighteen to nineteen range.
All right. Anybody else?
There are no, there, no other hands up or any comments in the chat at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm gonna close that, um, and I'm gonna move on to comments from the board. And I am going to start with Ms. Packer and apologize again, um, that if there were comments that you meant to share earlier, um, I kept looking at you and it just seemed like things kept rolling. So if you would like to start, or you can wait, your choice. But thank you for spending your time and being present with us.
Thank you for having me today.
Absolutely. Is there anything that you'd like to share? Any thoughts or questions?
Not really. I just did a lot of listening today, but it was really helpful and I took some good notes.
Well, thank you again, and we appreciate you. All right, um, so we will move through, um, the rest of our board members. So I'm looking at the screen and I am going to start with Ms. McKeever. Do you have anything else that you would like to share?
Hey, I was just, um, I think one of the primary, um, things that we haven't really talked about is what isn't working in virtual. Um, and, um, the, Ms. Johnson's presentation about the engagement assistance, um, just, you know, I, I feel like we just don't have enough data to like really put the pieces of the puzzle together. Um, but I've heard from the public about like keeping, um, well, like Mr. Fiero has, uh, in the abundant life, um, center that they do, they, they, they need like twenty-four adults in the week to keep the kids in the, um, in the center engaged. And, you know, we know where there are students who could really use some, uh, support. Um, and I just wonder who were, who were asking, um, who needs these supports? So, um, I just, I, I'm always like concerned where this, where information's coming and how it's flowing and whether we're getting, if we're all siloed or whether we're like actually talking with one another. I was, it was great heartened to hear about the initiative coming out of family engagement, um, and diversity and inclusion. Um, and I hope that that will continue, um, to happen. I just hope that we're also talking to, you know, uh, the, the nonprofit providers in our community, our principals and our teachers and, and families. Um, I just, I'm not on the ground personally at all of these places. And, uh, it sounds like engagement is, and I'm really grateful for that, um, and would love to devote more resources to that. Um, especially if it means supporting our families who are really struggling. Also, we talk a lot about what's not working in virtual and there's no specifics about what that is. Um, I know I've heard that many times from different teachers, like, what does that mean? Um, I think it means predominantly social and emotional well-being for students. Um, and I do think that probably means connection, um, and engagement with other students. Um, but it's, it's funny, like, uh, I can hear, you know, my, my child's first, this is first year in public school for my first grader, and she, she's like, uh, has no idea who's, you know, who these people are. She knows, um, Ms. Bryson, Bryson Norris Morseburger's, uh, child, because they're in the same class, but that's about it, right? She, and she, like, they just waved to each other on the screen and they've never had any interaction socially. Um, and that's fine, I mean, for us, for now, um, but I know that, that, um, if there could be time to talk, but I know we don't even have time to do both math and literacy in a day. So I'm not sure what the answer is, but, um, I definitely, um, I, I had one more note that I wanted to say. Um, but yeah, so I, I just, I think mostly with the engagement assistance, I'm a little, A, I think that's a really relevant data point for our return to learn, um, discussion. And I think there's a lot of confusion about what is permitted and what is not permitted, given our vote about what in, what does, what does it mean? We never really voted to let special ed children come back one-to-one. Um, so does that mean that, what does that mean? And I think there's gonna need to be some clarification. Is there gonna be no? Uh, like, no, I, I don't know what it means, and I don't even wanna speculate. My reading of it is that no more children will go back to school between now and March eighth. And I just don't know that as a board. Um, I just know that that does not serve all of our students. And, um, I would like to have a more, um, individualized approach, um, in this extraordinary time. Also would like to not have, to be thinking so, um, so narrowly. I would definitely like to have a little bit more broadly, broader thinking about what's possible and what our students need. And I think it's really unfortunate that, um, we are at a point where we have a divided board rather than board. And I think it's meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever. Um, Ms. Purrier?
Congratulations to Ms. Torres and Mr. Bryant for your most recent election. Uh, I would like to say thank you to Ms. McKeever for allowing me to serve as her vice chair over these past several months. Uh, she and I, uh, have faced many challenges, uh, personally. Uh, and as it relates to the board, and I, um, appreciate her support. And I appreciate the support of the other members of the board and of our CCS family. Um, I am looking forward to a lot of exciting things in twenty twenty-one. And I am going to attempt to the best of my ability to remain positive and upbeat in order that I be objective and continue to do the work that I have been elected to do.
Thank you, Ms. Purrier. Um, let's see. Mr. Bryant?
Um, first of all, I want to think, uh, would like to thank, um, Mrs. Purrier for her nomination for vice chair and for all of y'all who voted for me. I do appreciate your vote. And I do, um, I'm very honored, um, to, to be serving as, at least as your vice chair. So I'm looking forward to spending many months with you on many issues. And, uh, um, and when I think about my journey, uh, I started out in the Charleston City Schools as a substitute teacher and a homebound instructor before becoming a music teacher and a council educator. So what a journey. So I'm looking forward to the next chapter in my life. Um, I, um, we had a great discussion tonight, board members. I don't particularly think we're a divided board. We all have differences of opinions. Um, as to how we are going to proceed in getting our children and staff members safely back into the buildings. Um, I certainly would like to give a shout out to all of our wonderful teachers and staff members, administrators, who've been working hard behind the scenes to eventually make this happen. But we're in a pandemic. And, um, things are going on all around us, not only the pandemic, but just the society as a whole. This country is broken and there's so much going on in our communities. Um, people are having a rough time. So we, as a school system, hopefully will be able to get our children. And nothing concerns me more. I know a lot of our children are, some are doing very well. Um, I have nephews and nieces who are doing virtual learning. One is doing very well, other, you have to give her, give her a little nudge. Um, but also we know there are other students who are struggling. So that, that worries me. I, I, you know, I don't get a lot of sleep at night thinking about those children. But I think through it all, we're gonna get through this. And, um, at the end of the day, uh, we have to think about the safety of our staff members and our teachers. And, um, I'm looking forward to the day that all of our students be walking the halls back in these buildings. Um, so yes, we're gonna have robust discussions, but that's good. You know, that's, that's very good for the board to, um, to be on one end of the spectrum and, and the other. Um, the community engagement posts, you all have done a marvelous job of connecting with our community. I like the fact of the engagement assistance that are targeting those students who need that extra push and that one-on-one. Um, so thank you all for doing a great job, um, as well as our equity, um, committee initiatives. So having said all of that, um, I think, um, we're moving forward in the right direction. It's gonna take time and patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Mr. Wade?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, congratulations to you and Brother, um, Bryant. Um, and I, I just wanted to quickly respond to Jennifer's comments that the board is divided. Um, and I think it's okay to, um, be, for a board to disagree. Um, but I just, just for clarification, that she said that we wanted to start the students back sooner. And she had proposed the fifteenth, and we're, uh, marching, we're going on the eighth. So I'm not understanding her, her logic there, but, I mean, um, this is just a very difficult decision that we have to make and, and we're dealing with a lot of information. And I think that we made the best decision, um, with what we have. And we always have the ability to go back and, and change. And, and I hope that the numbers work out and we are able to go to school, um, have the students back in school sooner than March eighth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Uh, Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Uh, yes, thank you and congratulations, um, everyone on their new positions. Um, I just wanted to say that I think that, uh, right now, that we really should be focusing on equity. And it can look different, uh, different students, different models, different ways. And I know we can't solve everything, but we have, you know, the, the abundant life Childcare Center, they're showing up every meeting saying that they have needs and that they need support. So the people are coming to us, telling us exactly what the needs are. We need to support them right now, even if we're not back in the buildings. And also to echo what Ms. McKeever said, you know, until, uh, the meeting in November, I believe, I didn't think any students were in the building. So there does seem to be some wiggle room about how we're allowing students back in the building and on, on what basis. So I, I think that there's still room for discussion about, um, additional students who are in need of support, who are comfortable. And also, um, as, as, as long as the teachers are comfortable coming back into the buildings as well. And, um, just to, to, to echo or to go back to a past meeting, I, I wanna emphasize that like students, we wanna protect our students and we wanna keep faculty and staff safe. And so anything we're suggesting, I wouldn't want staff and faculty to be comfortable coming back into the buildings. And a few meetings ago, we were talking about like, who wants to come back? And we're weighing it with supply and demand, and I don't think that we should look at it that way. Um, if, if teachers are willing to come back, that's good, but it, supply and demand, it, I don't view them that way. And so I really wanna emphasize that anything that And so I really want to emphasize that anything that we're suggesting is if teachers are comfortable coming back and if they're able to actually do it and they don't have extenuating circumstances like pre-existing conditions or older relatives or, you know, just at-risk people they're taking care of. And also the, the date, I believe that Ms. McKeever was saying March, whatever date we pick, we're still chasing a date. That was my point is that let's just, we, we have more data that we can look at. And instead of picking a date, I prefer to pick metrics, datas and vaccinations because it's, this roller coaster is stressful on a lot of people. And lastly, whatever we decide to do, I hope that we're realistic in our expectations of what we can do during a pandemic. I don't want any students to slip behind, but it's a pandemic and there's going to be some sly. And when kids were in the buildings, we've had achievement gaps for decades. So I just want to be realistic that we're, it's, it's not going to get closed during the pandemic. And so I just want us to have realistic expectations for ourselves, our students and our teachers. And I believe that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your comments and the discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Kraft?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be really brief. No, I think we're trying to do something that we have no template for. This is a process and a situation that we have not been in before. And, you know, I think we're all struggling to sort things out and, you know, try to weigh various factors. You know, we're not magicians or anything. We're doing the best we can and we're, you know, putting our best opinions forward. But it's really hard. It's a very hard process as, you know, if you've stayed with us for these four hours of this meeting, you'll, you'll know that. And, you know, I appreciate the robust discussion that our board has and did have on this issue and it will continue. We also really value your feedback, community, teachers, staff. You know, so we, it's important that we hear from you so that we're not just guessing. And feel free to contact us in between these meetings and just let us know your thoughts and your concerns. And, you know, that's why we're here. Couple of other things, just I am a part of the VSBA Federal Advocacy Committee. And that's the group that usually we go to Washington and we lobby our congresspeople regarding our needs. And of course, we're not actually going to Washington, but we're still going to be lobbying and meeting with our congresspeople. In, you know, we have a, we have a brand-new representative. And so anyway, just wanted to let you know that that process is happening. And, you know, we're being given some excellent talking points and frameworks for, you know, to lobby for our needs. And so that's going on. And then I'm part of the Mental Wellness Task Force that is actually meeting tomorrow morning. And just want to say there's a lot of really good work going on in social, emotional learning. So there's a lot of efforts being made. And, you know, I feel really good about that. The needs are there. The needs are really strong and especially strong this year. But I think there's a strong group put in place to try to reach out to, you know, to address those kinds of needs. And also I appreciate all the engagement work and the presentation, all of that, all of what's going on. I think we need our engagement team more than ever this year and you've really come through. So really appreciate that. And finally, I'd like to actually thank Ms. McKeever for two years as chair and for your service. And now you get to sit back in that chair and relax a little bit more. So anyway, thank you so much for stepping up. It's hard and welcome Lisa and James to the leadership team. And that's it.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I almost missed you. Also, I, again, yes, want to express my gratitude to Ms. McKeever and Ms. Perrier for the last couple of years, your leadership of the board. I look forward to, you know, continuing our work, continuing these discussions as, as many of you have said, you know, that this isn't easy. It's all really, really challenging. I don't know that there's, you know, a right answer. And, and we all are doing our best. So I appreciate the input of each and every board member. You know, the expertise, you know, and, and the voice, voices of, of teachers and people in the buildings and staff. Thank you for all of the work you do and we do. We appreciate hearing from you, what's working and what, you know, what we can potentially tweak a little bit and how we can support you. That, that's really important going forward. To, you know, the families that, that reach out to us, you know, we hear you. I often feel like, you know, I should, I should extend some type of apology. You know, it's hard and, and, you know, but this is so much bigger than all of us. And so all I can do is encourage us to continue to support each other the best we can and to, to do our part to continue to stay healthy and, and wear your masks and, and to not give in to this COVID fatigue and it is, it's tiring and this is a long haul. And, you know, even with the vaccines on the horizon, you know, we still have to continue to, to do our parts because we are really nowhere near where we need to be as far as out of the woods yet. So I, I think that's my biggest point that I'd like to leave with everybody. Dr. Atkins, thank you and your team for all of the presentations. And at this point, I will move to our next point, and that is superintendent comments. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Ms. Torres. I'd like to echo all of the thank yous and congratulations to the board members. Thank you, Ms. Perrier and Ms. McKeever. Thank you, both of you, for leading us for the past two years. It has been wonderful and I think we've accomplished a lot. Congratulations to Ms. Torres and Mr. Bryant, taking those leadership roles. And we look forward to all of the great work that we're going to do going forward. And I agree tonight, the discussion, robust discussion, there are no perfect answers. There are no perfect models to put forward and we will keep tweaking our models and tweaking our pathway forward as we work our way through COVID. So Ms. Becker, let's, let's recognize some of our staff members.
So again, this board member, we'd like to recognize our Virtual Instruction Pros, our VIP awards. And we have two sets that we'd like to bring, our December 7th award winners. We have Nicole Armstrong, who's the Assistant Principal at Charlottesville High School. Lois Burke, Student Achievement Data Analyst at CHS. So we have two winners from CHS this week. We also have Deborah Johnson, who's the Instructional Coach at Johnson. And Lisa Wallace, who's a Spanish teacher at Walker. Congratulations to these four winners for December 7th. They were nominated by their peers to be recognized as the VIPs, the Virtual Instruction Pros. And for the week of December 14th, we have winners also. We'd like to recognize, we have Emily Areeco, the Librarian at Walker. Lynn Herman, Reading Specialist at Greenbrier. And Brendan Martin, Engineering Teacher at Beaufort. And Calder McClellan, the Instructional Coach at Venable. And our very own Leslie Becker, who's the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent. So congratulations to all of the award winners. It really is nice to receive an award when you have been nominated by your peers. So thank you to all of our teachers and thank you to the recipients. We honor you tonight for all of the work that you have done. And those are my comments, Ms. Torres. Oh, one other comment, with our COVID-19 vaccinations, we are working with the Health Department to support their efforts. They have indicated that they need volunteers. They of course need the medical personnel, the nurses to be trained to give the, the vaccinations. But they also are in need of non-medical personnel to support the whole process of getting individuals through to get the shot. So here is a link to the VDH Medical Reserve Corps. And you can go on that site and sign up to be a volunteer. And we would encourage anyone who might be interested to do that. And that will help us to be able to support the Blue Ridge Health Department's work in giving the vaccination. Again, thank you for all of your work and we look forward to taking what has been discussed here and voted on at the board meeting back and with staff and start working on our pathway forward. Thank you, Ms. Torres.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Dr. King, do we have anything for our work session wrap-up?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are two items, schedule meeting with Dr. Atkins and at least two school board members to revise draft of policy KN AJ and provide PALS Fall 2020 data by race.
Thank you. Quickly, just a review of upcoming meetings. We do have a budget work session Saturday, January 16th via Zoom. We have a joint budget work session with City Council, January 28th. That is also scheduled via Zoom. And then our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Thursday, February 4th at 5:00 PM via Zoom. Do we have times for the, the budget work? That's at 8:00 AM or 8:30 AM? Is that correct?
It's at 8:30. I'm sorry. I thought that was longer.
That's okay. And then I believe our joint budget work session with City Council is an evening meeting.
It's at 5:00 PM on the 28th.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I think we got through everything. So unless there are any objections, I'd like to say we are adjourned for this meeting. Sound good?
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, everybody.